The record show that it is 9:00 AM on May the 2nd. Mr. Pickerell, sir, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance today? Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, folks, thank you for being here today. Finally getting a little of that blessed moisture, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. Madam Secretary, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Camden.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Yep.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Amendments to the, amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not see them.
I don't have anything.
I've got an item, but I think I might bring it up under Commissioner Items, because I'm not real comfortable with changing the agendas as we go along. Is that reasonable? So, I will add that. Audience introduction.
Jackie Fubus from Sentinel.
Alan Butler from the Airport.
Bob Jolly from the Airport.
Jerry Pickerell of the Golf Course.
Tracy Ballard Tribune.
Thank you, welcome. No minutes to approve at this time, so we'll move on to Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you start off, please?
I would be happy to, but I have nothing to report since yesterday's meeting.
All right. Commissioner Camden.
Yeah, it was quick and dirty, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Only thing we did, Tom and I went to the landfill and talked with the state certifiers for monitoring the landfill out there, going to put in a couple test wells out there, which is good. And we'll be able to use that for the engineering data for actually expanding it later on. That's what they hope, and what we hope. Went pretty well, didn't it, Tom?
Mm-hmm. I thought so.
And that's all I have that's new, and we'll find out more as we go along and as we start making a plan on the expansion.
Okay. Good. Yeah, I, since yesterday, obviously, was out at the landfill as well and met with those folks. There were really two entities there. One was C.P.H.E., and then they had a rep from a company that will actually do the drilling. So, we met with really two, two different folks, but they're going to Sonic Drill that and pull the cores.
That'll be fun.
So...
That'll be noisy.
Yeah. And they thought probably it would take 30 to 60 days to get me positioned to actually start the drilling out there. So, they're going to drill up on the north side of that trench area and on the west side of that trench area. So, we were very excited.
Were really confident that the core samples will work.
Yeah. We're very excited about the possibility of being able to use those two drillings, corings, for the data, engineering data on the area landfill. So, that will save us.
Yeah, saves quite a bit of money.
Money, and then almost as probably critical as time, so we won't have to go through this all again. And really, she said that it looked like if the data from these two wells came, or not wells, but core drills, and they didn't hit water, then we could probably use that data for going west down towards the gravel pits, if we ever want to use that as an area landfill. They said we'd probably have to drill a monitoring well, groundwater monitoring well, on the west side of that. But, boy, we're talking, we can get by with the data off of these two wells, or two drill sites, saving a lot of money and time, so was excited about that. And then I went down and caught the last part of the Planning and Zoning meeting that was held in the conference center at the bowling alley. I didn't really get involved in that meeting, but I did slip in there before they adjourned. And then at 3:00 o'clock yesterday, we had a Health and Safety Response Team meeting, and I don't know if we've even talked about that. Actually, there, there was, that group kind of came about in response to different entities in the county going out on, on some calls, whether it's EMS, Sheriff, Human Services, Public Health. And so, we're kind of unofficially meeting and trying to decide if there's a real need for us to have a Health and Safety Response Team. If somebody, Jackie Hobby from Planning and Zoning has to go out on a, on a call to check something out, we kind of want to have an organizational thing put in place to say, if she feels like she needs help, she can call. And so, right now, we're looking at Sheriff's Office, Planning and Zoning, Public Health, Human Services, Commissioners, Fire, EMS, County Attorney, to kind of set on this committee. So, as that progresses, I would think we'd be bringing that to the Board for a little more formal thing, but we did have that meeting yesterday. Went pretty good. We're also talking about trying to procure hazmat suits for all those individuals. Right now, it's pretty loosely controlled. Some people have them, some people don't, some people have booties, some people have masks.
I got a paint mask.
So, yeah. So, you know, we'll get into meth pads, grows, you know, we need to be a little more organized, I think, as a county there. So, we are moving forward with that. We're scheduled to meet again. I can give you that date if you guys would be interested in setting in on that. That is May 16th at 2:00 PM in the Commissioners' Room.
When?
And it's May 16th.
16th, I think.
And instead of the acronym being hazard, it's H.A.S.R.T.
Hazard.
Hazard. So, we thought we were pretty clever coming up with that. Anyway, would enjoy and welcome Commissioners being involved in that. And certainly, our attorney was sick yesterday, not feeling well, so we knew why he was not there, but he had attended the first meeting and was glad to have him there. And then, the other thing I want to bring up to the Commissioners is an item. I would like to include, and I'll certainly make a motion of that effect, that we include the IT Department as part of our regular monthly staff report.
Good idea.
I would like to have those, or that individual come in. Do you feel like that would require a motion?
I don't believe so.
I've spoken to our IT Director, and he said he was fine with it, but Ms. Brenda, then by general consent, can we start adding them? I say "them" because there's two of them now, but soon to be one. We'll just call that IT.
I didn't interrupt them.
Okay, thank you. You good? Did you have something to?
No, they were asking what time, and it was 2:00.
2:00 for the hazard?
Yeah. Oh, the hazard meetings, 2:00, yes. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I will get with Vernon and see which day and what time.
Okay, yep, that'd be great. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then I thought, are there other reports we should be hearing on a regular basis? And then I never got to give that much thought, but I would throw that out, too.
Think about it.
I don't, I can't really, I just...
Come in that we don't already have.
I just don't know why IT was never in the loop.
You're trying to fill up a whole week's worth of meetings?
Yeah, well, I, I'm trying to stay informed and stay abreast so that we don't fall behind the eight ball if IT has a need or concern or whatever, so.
I think that's a good plan.
Other than that, I don't have anything else, or again, or Commissioner Items. So, we'll move on, unless you give them anything else, Commissioner Items. Attorney Items?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. Administrative Assistant?
Oh, nothing.
Okay. We'll move into Staff Reports.
I don't even land, did you?
Yes, we did. Well, I tried to delay it.
That's 10 minutes into this meeting, and you're up.
So, Airport, for your monthly report, welcome. You're both welcome to come up if you'd like. We can drag another chair up, or...
Probably here better.
Hello, sir, how are you?
Good, sir. Good to see you.
I want you to note, I put on all my aviation regalia, and you guys is honored.
You got a great tie.
I got the tie, the coat, the hat.
Good morning, sir.
Let's sit back down. Good morning.
I'll shake your hand, Bob.
Good morning.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Glad to see you.
Yeah, I shook Alan's and sat right back down, too.
Well, that's pretty much the way it's...
We did not have, we did not have any documentation, correct?
No.
Ahead of time, okay, good.
Nope.
Good, good, good. To make sure I wasn't missing something.
And I'll start. No, I didn't send any this time, because there really wasn't anything.
Okay. We'll take your monthly deposit.
Yeah, you go ahead and make that check out, too. I had my notebook over here. But, hadn't been much going on with the wind, the wind, and I'd like to say the weather, but it just...
Just wind, didn't it?
It's just wind.
Yep.
Wind, thank goodness we got a little bit of precipitation. Won't go at my house, anyway.
Rained pretty hard on our place.
Yeah. Maybe we'll get some more. Okay, to start with, not much has happened, other than the wind and the weather. The State has come by and inspected the Airport. You know, we told you, they, they said they were going to make us one of the first airports they inspected, and they did.
Oh.
Yeah, and we knew, we knew they were coming.
Is it because they like the food here in the valley?
Yeah, they like to eat. I don't know if they ate or not. Usually, they do. But, I think Caitlin and, I don't know who came with her, for sure.
Whole bunch of young interns.
Because they got some, they have some new people that they're training on doing the different reports and stuff, so there was a whole carload of them.
I was going to say, I'm compelled to ask, did they fly in?
No, they drive. They, they don't like...
Cowards.
They don't like...
Especially this time of the year.
And they got a twinkie light on top of their car.
Oh, so they're somewhat official, aren't they?
So, we can expect a report on that in 90 to 120 days. It takes them a while to get all that done. And since they've got some new people, they have some new people.
So, they were trained while they were looking?
Yeah. Here's what we need, here's how we do it, and here's what we do, et cetera. I was not there, and, in fact, they called Bob and said, "We're coming," and, but he didn't have to be there. And so, we kind of picked up on the...
They didn't want him around?
He was like me, he had a doctor's appointment. Yeah. That they, they probably didn't really need us around, anyway.
No, they don't.
You know, because they're doing...
They're doing their thing.
They're talking, yeah. Okay, a second thing that they've told us in this conversation with Caitlin at the State, was they said, "Well, you have a game management report that you'll need to be filling out. We noticed you haven't done one of those, and your Board can do that." And what's on it? Well, how are you going to manage the game, you know, fences and stuff? And they said, "And there is a class that does go with that."
Oh, great.
And they will be expected to have...
So, you have to fill out the form, and what we're going to have to buy to keep the deer off the runway?
Yeah.
Or the antelope?
Now, we're going, come on, yeah.
Is it required class, or no?
Yes.
Yeah, we're supposed to go. I, I don't think it's a real complicated, but it's to try to keep everybody working on the same sunbeam.
Is it in Denver, or is it online, or what is it?
I don't know, she didn't tell Bob.
But there's the report, it's real short and sweet. Bunch of big boxes. Did an airplane hit a deer?
Check, check, so.
Okay.
That isn't going to be too much. And I don't know, in their meetings, guys, sometimes they'll have a huge hangar full of people, and they'll have, you know, sandwiches and soda pop and stuff. And then other times, they have this big meeting, and you go up there, and you think it's going to be a whole bunch of people, and there'll be this part of the State, or this quarter of the State.
10 people.
Yeah, 10, 12 people. We made this small, so everybody could get in their questions and stuff. So, you don't know when they're going to do that. And with that, give it to Robert, the Airport Manager.
I've got a report that's a little bit different this time, and since I've been on the Airport Board in 2011, we've never reported this to the Commissioners. And we probably won't, unless there's a significant update. But when I came on board in 2011, if anybody asked how many aircraft we had stationed at the Airport, the Board would have gotten a bunch of blank looks, because nobody knew. In 2014, the FAA asked us, so we went out and counted. We had 10 aircraft total.
Based.
Based there.
Yeah.
One was a glider, one was a twin, and no jets. Today, we've got 22 aircraft, two gliders and one jet. So, there's been a significant...
That's good, that's some houses that were built.
Yes, and we've got a new house going up this month, and we've got a lot of people clamoring for hangar space. And in 2011, we were selling a little under 1,500 gallons of fuel a year, and we're selling it at cost, which meant the county picked up everything. Today, we're selling about 6,000 gallons of fuel, and we're making about 35 cents a gallon, on average, anywhere from 50 to 25. So, we're picking up a lot of the expenses at the Airport. So, the Airport's growing, and it's, it's growing significantly, and I think over the next few years, it'll even grow a lot more. So, that's just for y'all's information.
Good one.
Can I ask a question? Yesterday, we heard about a large jet that is interested in using our runway. And I heard about multiple core samples that are going to have to be taken from the runway to determine, I, I'm assuming it's weight, to make sure our runway is safe for that? First of all, I don't know if I'm talking correctly, but if that's correct, is, is that going to in any way impact the integrity of the runway by drilling many core samples into that?
We're just kind of in the, in the beginning of what you do, to find out what you need to do, so that you can actually do it. And one of the things that I think that has happened is the jet driver has visited with Bob just briefly, and, and so, so that's kind of where they're getting started.
And then Bob referred him to me, and then you're talking and everything.
And then Bob...
Called?
Called Bill, and then Bill talked to the family.
Mike Jones. He represents the family right now.
Tall fellow, isn't he?
Mm-hmm. Yes, he is.
Tall guy. He's a family pilot.
About six foot seven.
So, we don't know much right now to report. Certainly, whatever we might report, it might not be accurate, that's why, you know.
Too early.
A little early. Okay. Project.
How much per gallon over your cost are you charging at the moment?
Right now, it's 25.
And do you know how many gallons you sold in April? If you don't know, that's fine.
I don't.
Sometimes you report that, I was just wondering if you knew.
No, I don't. I was going to stop by the Airport this morning and look, and watch, and I was running a little bit late, so.
No, big deal, I was just wondering.
You mentioned your wildlife class. I'm assuming that includes prairie dogs?
Gophers.
Gophers.
Deer. It would be, now, there's two, as I understand it, there's kind of two, two sides to this. One is the State keeping track of who has prairie dog or wildlife problem. Most, most of the problems Airports have are with prairie dogs, because they dig holes, and they dig it next to the runway, and the water gets underneath the runway, and that type of thing. But then they also have mitigation things that they can do. And one of the things that they have right now, that they, they caught us at a meeting a couple of months ago, was that they've got a contractor, that's USDA, wears a uniform, she's, and she's been here before, and they, they worked on, you know, Sam. Yeah, they, even if they see an owl or eagle...
Oh, they log it, they're just taking a census?
Yeah. And she, she is hired to, she would be hired to come down, and when they came before, they brought quite a crew, and they went and...
Yes, they were here.
And counted, and they tried to figure out if there were deer or antelope close by, and that kind of thing. Not necessarily get rid of deer or antelope, not, that's not the point, but...
Does the State have any funds to help local airports mitigate those problems?
They, they, the USDA, when they came down last time, they charged us, and I can't remember now what the number was, but when I talked to her at our meeting up in Denver, she said now it's no cost to the county.
They're a contractor.
To come down and do a study?
In your governmental agreement, yeah.
And if their study says, "Man, you guys got to get rid of these prairie dogs," do they have any money to help do that?
Yes, they do.
They do, and it would be...
They do that.
Not, nothing's free, but it wouldn't be at no cost to the county. And there's other things that we, you know, we're kind of high and dry here, but there's other places and other things that have different kinds of problems than, than we would have. We really don't have very many problems with wildlife.
Right.
But Gunnison.
Gunnison, I was just going to say Gunnison.
Gunnison had a big problem with that, and they spent lots of money.
Putting tall fences up.
And tall fences, and it's marshy, and they were going to dry that up and make some roads and whatnot, it was airport-related. And, and they finally wound up after years and years of working on it, everybody got together and they got it worked out. But it was rechanneling that marshy river, the river bottom that runs on the south side of the Airport. I mean, that's just one thing. And then you go to Grand Junction, you got another thing. You got all the long-legged, what they call those, the birds, you know.
Cranes?
Yeah, the cranes that go through during the migration time of year. That's a big problem for them. They're big. I mean, you go through a jet engine with one of those, and it'll shut you down.
Well, I can see where antelope could be a problem for us. They like to hang out down there in that country, so...
Yes, they do.
And we have more deer than we've had before, we think.
Yes. Yeah, one of the questions on the questionnaire is, do we have a fence? And that's a requirement, and that's why we've got the gates on there now. In 2011, we didn't have gates, but the requirement is you have to have a fence completely around the Airport, as long as it, now, they want to know how high it is, and I'll tell them how high it is. But the requirement is to have a fence all the way around, that's why we put the two gates in back in 2012.
Is that a transportation security thing, or is that an animal thing?
It, it's more of a people problem security thing. Now, anybody could go through that fence, anybody could cut it and go through.
So, so what they do, this is just a little bit of information for the people that don't fly. It's like signs on the highway here, you see deer signs to let the public know, "Watch for deer as you're driving down the hardscrabble," or whatever, or in the hardscrapple's case, it's mountain goats.
Yeah, it is.
But, but if it gets to be a hat, a big enough concern, then what they do, they, they flag it on a chart, and they flag it on a plate that to land, aircraft land, they'll put, "Watch for possible wildlife at the end of the runway," or whatever. We've never had a problem up here that I know of, except for cattle, before the fence was up.
Yeah, and we had a few horses way back.
And cows, cows would get on it, and actually, they'd just look at you, you can't scare them, but the deer, you can.
But there is an official notice in our...
Yeah, on the...
Wouldn't be able to use the word "plate," pilots. You open your book, I gave you one of those books, but you open the book, you go to West Cliff, and it reads you caution, deer in the area, gliders, uh...
Yeah, and you want that from a liability point of view, and you want it from a safety point of view for the pilot.
That's a plate, that's directory.
Yeah, I know, obviously Canyon City's got chain link fence around the majority of it, not all of it, it's, they, they also have barbed fence on the south side, but Fremont County actually is in Canyon City, so...
Yeah, they have two fences there, they've got the critter fence, the real tall one by the highway, and then they've got a people fence that you don't see, that people are always, no, I say always, but Dick's always whining about somebody come through the gate, puts a lock on it, they cut the lock off. I don't know, you know. They're around a lot of people.
Okay, gentlemen, anything else? Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for listening.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Bring in money in next time.
We bought 35 cents, that was better than nothing.
Yeah.
Got to shake your hand, going to...
Oh, I got to get around here, right here. Thank you, guys.
I run into this guy everywhere, everywhere we go.
I'm a busy person. Do a lot of business at your store.
Yes, he does. Good day to you.
Treasures Report, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? And you, you're doing well, thank you.
Nice to meet you. Virginia, how are you?
So, you see the ones that are highlighted? I just kind of want to give, give you a little education on that. Those are the ones that I pay out. Those are the entities that I collect for and pay out. So, and I added them up, it's 1,153,997.24 for this month. Just, it's FYI, I think.
Okay, can you hold that thought for just a second, then? Let me get my eye on it.
To who do you...
I don't...
Traffic fines. Mm-hmm. I have to pay to the State. State, vast, 11th judicial, there's a lot of different entities here.
Hospital, did you? Yeah, I was just looking down here at 625, 709. How's come that's different than 1.153 here?
Well, I haven't taken that out yet. I haven't taken that out yet. I don't have to pay this out until the 10th of this month.
Okay.
This is what we collected last month. I have to by statute pay it out by the 10th of this month.
So, this will be what you will end up paying out?
Correct.
That includes this?
Uh, that is not that.
Okay.
It's not been taken out yet.
But that's what you will do?
That's what I will be taking out, mm-hmm.
Do you get to keep any of the traffic fine money, or does some of it come?
Yeah, it's, some of it stays to the County.
Anything unusual to report?
No, we're pretty good this month.
Motion to accept this?
I'll move, we accept Virginia's Treasures Report.
Second that.
April.
Moving, second to accept April's Treasures Report, discussion, debate. Bearing no...
You may help us set a record.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing or motion carries? Report's been accepted, anything else, ma'am?
No.
I can just sign below, oh, yeah, I see it.
I tried to print real small, write real small.
Yeah, and I'm a big writer, you've probably noticed that, right? All right, well, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. We will press on. Okay. Thank you for coming in, Virginia.
Laura's on her way.
Okay, thank you, Human Services will be next. While we're waiting, we had a couple people show up after we did our audience introduction. Would you like to introduce yourself? Ann?
Ann Varenther.
Sir, would you care to introduce yourself?
Certainly, my name's Frank...
Certainly, my name's Frank Turbin.
Right.
Nothing but a valley resident.
Heard the name a lot, nice to put a face to that. I appreciate that, thank you, thank you. Good morning.
It wasn't in the sheriff's blotter either.
Good mornings. Look at that nice tie you have on. See, I had, I had to make a comment, I had to do it, I had to do it, you know. We have to do these things, we get the opportunity, you know.
There reruns now, you can go through all my tires.
Oh, that's funny. Okay.
I really like your new.
I do too.
It's much better, it's so much better. And then I worked it out where I'm just, I'm printing it off and then I'm scanning it and that's working much better too, so everything's working a whole lot better with this. So, you can understand it better.
Yeah.
It's not all clustered up there and everybody's going.
Human services document.
Yeah, it's like the.
Like government.
Yeah, like government stuff, you ought to see this thing I'm supposed to fill out now, like I can't, I can't even read it, the boxes are so small and it's like this and it's commodity thing and I'm like, okay. So anyhow, it's pretty simple on the front page, cause we're just into March and not anything going, oh my gosh, on that, so. And then the next one is the old age pension and that just shows the number of payments and, and stuff, where we are on that, there again.
Can I?
Sure, you can.
I don't lay awake at night thinking about it, but I certainly try to
Okay.
Watch my language and verbiage so I get everything just right and we're still at old age pension.
And that's what it's called. It is, it is called old age pension, OAP.
So, I'm gonna ask, do you have an old age discount when I go into another business instead of a senior discounts? They probably won't even know what I'm talking about.
I don't think they would, so I wouldn't do that if I was. Gonna get anywhere with it.
But you wanna admit you're a geezer, Tom.
Yeah, well, I don't have any problem admitting that, that's for sure, but.
And then the leap is here and the last leap payment went out this month, leap is over now. And so, we didn't have anybody applied, well, that's not true, because they will run a payroll in May for anybody that applied late in April, but the program ended April 30th. So, there'll probably, there'll be a May payroll that runs. They also did a supplement, supplemental payment, they're going to, of two hundred dollars across the board to everybody that received leap. So, that's supposed to run probably with that May payroll. They were trying to do it in April and it didn't happen, which is fine, so they'll be getting that out.
Do you get that leap from the feds ahead of time or is that in arrears after you expend the money? Or does it go straight to?
It goes, it goes straight to our, we don't.
It's not a pass through?
It's not a pass through, we don't see it, it's just goes, yeah, we don't, we don't get the money and pay it out, it just goes straight through to them. So, and then Medicaid transportation, this just shows you our Medicaid transportation and it was down a little bit this month, which was really good, but we spend a lot of time on Medicaid transportation. Cause we have to do all these forms and we have more and more people.
So, is it primarily ambulance costs?
Oh, no, no, this is anybody that's on Medicaid, if they have a doctor's.
Also, if they get mileage for it.
Mileage, it is a reimbursement for mileage, is what it is.
You're not hauling them?
No, we're not hauling them, it, Rotary takes them some and we can reimburse Rotary, um, private cars, you know, some of them drive themselves, but because they're on Medicaid, we can reimburse that. So, yeah, we have to fill out forms, they come in, they tell us, this is where I'm going, this is the date, then we have to fill out a form, they have to sign, they have to bring it back in, then we have to enter it on the computer and we handle a lot of paperwork with Medicaid transportation. But anyhow, so. And then our community service block rap. And started in January, to date, in March, I, I haven't had anybody apply yet. I've had somebody apply this month, so they'll show up probably next time.
Please remind me what that's used for?
We use it for emergency, uh, rent utilities, we use it for prescriptions, we use it for dental, we've even used it for appliances, if they need hot water heaters, refrigerators, that type of stuff.
Vehicle repair, tires?
We can do vehicle repair if they are working. And tires and that type of stuff, we can use it for that too.
How much is the fund? How much, how big's the payroll?
Well, that's a good.
You just pay as you go?
Well, I get an allocation, I get so much money and it's, we're tied in with Upper Arkansas Council of Governments. And so, they do four counties, including them, and they portion out a share. And so, they just tell me this is how much money you're going to get, so I never know. And I only have fourteen hundred and thirty dollars right now, I'm supposed to get more and they haven't received any more, so as soon as they receive more, then I'll get more, so I never know.
So, it's, it's sporadic, it's not by the month or anything, it's just whenever?
It, we're supposed to get it at the first of the year and then we're supposed to have it and it's supposed to run through December, but yeah, as you can see, it comes from wherever and it's a grant that UCO does and so, they just have to wait to see if the grant's gonna be funded and all good stuff like that. We can pay up to seven hundred dollars for each client and it, you know, that's, that's our cap, we can't go over that. So, if they need a new refrigerator, we can pay seven hundred and that's it, or whatever it is.
And that's income based?
It is income based, it is income, they have to fill out a form and provide verification of income and then we're audited, they come down and audit us and all of that stuff. Okay, and then Energy Outreach Colorado, we've been running this grant since September, no, October. And I, yeah, we had some March, I've had some in April, which will show up on here. We're doing okay, I think to date, I have like two thousand left in that grant to last until then. We haven't been hit as hard because it hasn't been as cold and leaps been, have been working for them. And then the next one just shows the amount of food assistance that we paid out from March. And then the TFAV.
That snap stays pretty consistent.
Yeah, it does, up and down, we lose some, we gain some, but it stays pretty close to that.
Now, the dollars.
The dollars fluctuate just depending on the number of people in the household and income and all of that.
But still pretty close.
But pretty close, pretty close, yeah.
Less than ten percent down.
Yep. And then the TFAV just shows the amount in poundage. I, it took me a long time to figure out where that number even came from, but I finally figured that out and then the dollar amount there.
TFAV's going okay?
TFAV's going okay, TFAV's going okay. Yeah, that's this weird report that I have to fill out now, like, oh my goodness. And so, the gal said, usually we get rid of all of our stuff and that didn't happen now, and so we have a little bit left and so we have to report that back. And yeah, that form is a little crazy there, but.
Yeah, and I noticed on a couple of these graphs, which I really appreciate those, you know, the, the scale, it makes it look like there's a huge increase in the number of households from one month to another, but it's not.
But it's not, but when, when you look at that, it's not, yeah, cause I did that too, I thought, well, good gosh, and then I looked and I went, oh, it went to household, it just, it just makes that look really, really crazy there, but.
Cool.
But, so there's that and everything, we're plugging along on that, so. Oh, it is, it's much nicer. I just said, we're getting rid of all of this stuff we have down here and I wanna make it easier and the graphs make it easier, you can understand it much, much better.
Very.
Much better.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for getting that.
You're welcome. And let's see, um, we made it through April, like what was kind of a hectic month because we had people at training, Stacy and I were gone for three days, Stacy was gone all week after that. Uh, we got some new caseworker hired, she came on board yesterday. So, that's good, she's at training.
For the next.
She's at training this week and then, I don't know, then she's back and then she's at training and it goes on for a while.
Yesterday she has about seven weeks of training.
Oh, yes.
My gosh.
Are you at liberty to tell us the name, her name?
Uh, yeah, Nikki Weiner, she was a dispatcher over at the sheriff's office.
Stacy did a good job bringing her around yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, and at first, we didn't have anybody applying, cause it's got, you have to have a degree in that, but in the end, we ended up, we had five, which, which was a good poll. We interviewed three, one did not have the qualifications, once we looked at, at her and then the other one had a set amounts of salary that she needed, which no way could we do. No way, that, so that didn't happen. So, we interviewed three, two were from out of county and then Nikki, who's in county or she was working here. And so, she was the one that we chose. And then after we did that, about two days later, I get two more applications coming in the door, you know, so, yeah. One of them was, um, we thought would, we thought, when we looked at it, we thought, oh, this one was really being good. She graduated high school and just graduated college with a degree in, in social work. She's been interning down at Fremont County DHS. But Fremont County is down six caseworkers and they haven't hired her, so it makes you wonder why. So, or like, so maybe that's okay. And the fact that we got it, actually, we closed it on April 6th and she didn't even submit the application till the 16th, so we're like, apparently she didn't see it or whatever, so we thought, you know, it was a missed opportunity, but she had already gone through all of the training that was required, through all of this training that Nikki's having to do, she already did. So, that would've been helpful, but I was like, and Fremont County knew we were looking for a caseworker and never said anything and, uh, we were down there for a meeting and we were mentioning that and the gal, one of the gal said, well, she's still interning with us, so I thought, maybe we missed a, it was a good thing, maybe that didn't help and you never know, we'll see. So, pretty, maybe in the next, sometime this month, uh, we'll start advertising for Rhonda's position, it's just been too hectic to try to do it now, we wanted to get her on board and get stuff going, so we've just been trying to pick up the slack. But when we do that, we're gonna start, I'm gonna do some rearranging, I'm gonna take, Rhonda's been doing the child support and, and every, and besides eligibility and everything else, and we're gonna take that away from her and have somebody else do that, because we have, getting more child, child support cases and stuff and it's just too hard to stay up on that and balance it out. So, that person will be taking over those duties too.
So, it'll be CPS position, your new, new person coming on?
No, not CPS. No, this is gonna be, I'm not sure what we're gonna call it.
I'm gonna ask you, is there a title or?
Well, that's a good point, because you know, like Rhonda's in, um, a legal tech, technicians, eligibility techs, they do that. This person isn't gonna be really determining eligibility, she, they're gonna be doing different duties. And so, I'm gonna have to, oh, I'm sure there's a classification for her, there always is. So, I just need to figure out how we're gonna classify it and they'll be doing Rhonda's stuff, oh, well, actually, it'll be doing a case manager job, cause they'll be the case manager job and, um, child support, so probably that's what it's gonna be, so, yeah.
Thank you so much for.
You're welcome.
Format, oh my gosh, we did have a question, if you don't mind standing, a question?
Oh, no.
Can we just, Tracy and I need to spell Nikki's name, if you have it.
I do.
Should get back with you.
Yeah, I wanted to show I spell it right, okay?
I hate to spell people's names right.
It's W-I-E-N-E.
R, and then it's Nicole and I, N-I-C-O-L-E, there's no H in it, some people put an H in it, but I don't think there's anyone, I mean, an H in it, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure, I, I'm thinking, I'm gonna check that, just to make sure. Thank you, ma'am. Oh, sure.
It's the same one I ask every single month, any anomalies, anything unusual, any disasters going on we should know about?
No.
I ask every month.
I know. No, we don't have a disaster yet, thank you, thank you. They had one at the school yesterday, but we didn't, yeah, we, we got called and I'm like, why are we getting called on that? But found out why and we didn't have to do anything, had to go over there, so.
Well, it was nice to have Stacy and Nikki in our hazard.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, so, oh, yeah, yeah. And have that, I didn't get to talk to Stacy much after that, cause she had to go.
We had some people not be able to attend, so it was more of a, just a conversation, but we did talk about some, actually Ebola suits and.
And stuff like that, we had talked about that before.
So, we're, we're moving on and I informed the commissioners this morning that at some point, we'll probably formalize that a little more, maybe some draft with the attorney. But thank you for.
Yeah, because that is something that really needs to be addressed and who does what and the protocol and that, and it's, yeah, it really is.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I was gonna say that Stacy and Alyssa are at Soul Vista Training that Desiree's doing for mental health for teens. It's just, it's stuff, I, I went to one a long time ago, it just kinda gives you stuff to look out for and to see what teams and mental health and what you can, you know, if you see what you can do to help prevent it and stuff. So, I think it would be, um, it's a great thing, um, the, there was a grant that was put out and they used that money for, Soul Vista did, they applied and got it, so that they could use that money to put this on, so that was a really good thing, so. Glad to let you guys know that and it was nice to Soul Vista to do that, so.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, appreciate that. Again, I wanna hug you and I will later on about two, three, four minutes.
Oh, any, any.
I love it.
Anytime, I had a guy that I put some propane in his tank and he hugged me for that too, so that was good.
Good, 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 thank you ma'am. For our newcomers, welcome, come on up, would you folks like to introduce yourselves? We had introductions of the audience earlier.
Lee Creavon, my wife Carolyn.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Jim Parks.
Yes, sir, Jim, so hi, how are ya?
Courtney Miller, my wife Dan.
Thank you, appreciate that, welcome, nice to have you folks here. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are ya?
Very tired.
Yeah, are you? Been running and gunning.
Running and gunning, um, had a mutual aid request from Alamos, the sheriff's department through CSRB, search and rescue went out Monday, Monday night, they asked for more support and put some of our folks up in the motel there and I went over and I see the mission had a twenty hour day yesterday completed, I'll have a press release out to the paper, so, we drafted it yesterday on paper.
Wow.
Where were they?
Uh, off the trail, about two thirds of the way up to the lake.
There, right.
Yeah, it was a body recovery.
Truck or, you know, looked like a state truck of some kind up here, fire truck.
Oh, well, that was fire, this was a search and rescue assist, body recovery, um, so.
Well, I knew it was a search and.
Yeah, I don't know, I think fire's doing some, just training, working, prescribed stuff, um, yeah, so, so that was busy, we had ten people out yesterday, um.
And you were the IC on it?
I was IC, yeah. Threw myself under the bus with Pueblo, uh, oh, let's see, first day, Rio Grande, Fremont yesterday, Pueblo, Chaffey County South, Sawatch County, Custer County, Alamosa County, Po- did I say Pueblo County? Yeah, there were, there were eight teams, we had Flight for Life Monday, the multiple mission aircraft did a grid search for heat sensing, but we believe she was deceased sometime late Sunday, so.
Did MMA locate or?
No, no, they located another gentleman, they did find, so they grouped everybody up, all the teams, so that they'd see multiple heat sources, so we were looking for a single.
Wandering around.
So, they did, they did locate a male, single male party, I believe, smoking a cigarette, so pretty amazing that they have that kinda technology to say. No, it's not our, it's not our female subject, but we do, so, yeah, might've been a cigarette, not sure. So, it was a successful mission.
No wonder we haven't seen or heard from you lately.
I fell off the radar, got home at twelve fifteen, um, so.
Mission ended last night.
Yeah, we almost made it before dark, but the last half hour was in the dark coming down the trail, so, um, yeah, worked out well. Had a dog team from Laramie County and, um, so, yeah, interesting, dusted off the boots. Huh?
Was the victim local?
No, she had ties to Antonito, if you saw the Antonito post and we'll get an update out, but, uh, no, she was not. She, her ex-husband was, a twenty-nine-year-old female, twin kids, I'm not sure, boy, girl, so, um, yeah, and, and a public health, um, issue, and you mentioned Ebola, we had a twist on this one too, that I can't discuss, but it, it brought all that PPE and, and stuff to the front cornea too, so. stuff to the forecourt too, so, um...
You know, I think you just heard me, we talked about that yesterday in that hazard.
Okay. Yeah, we knew going in, so we grabbed some masks and extra gloves and chloral wipes and, and everything and no status, so, um, transferred to the coroner about nine thirty last night over there and, uh, got him all the photos, I haven't even looked at anything yet, so, uh, um, we also did one hundred, seven hundred last week training, had a lot of the Roanoke Bridge guys that are, I thought it went on too long, talked to Gary Hyde, uh, starting next year, we're gonna, FEMA wants them to do it online, so we're gonna push the online version. Um, it was a little too deep in the weeds. Did a web EOC training on Monday afternoon.
Yeah, I missed that, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, um, there is an exercise in Pueblo today, um, so there's a lot of regional posts, I don't know if you guys are getting those at the regional level or you need to, but they're, uh, they're doing an exercise where there was a catastrophic, catastrophic dam failure in Orphano County last night that's impacting Pueblo. Town of Boone, Fowler, some of those are getting, getting whacked hired in the exercise this morning, Orphano County went up to support that, um, but all the flooding and the, it's Orphano Dam Five, you know, is that scenario, it's catastrophic, they had a heavy rain event, that kinda stuff, so, so their EOC has stood up and running and they have to do an annual, um, exercise for their CSAP funding. Um, uh, I'm not gonna work Friday, Saturday is the wildfire prevention, um, event in Pueblo Mountain Park, um, and, uh, so Meredith and I will be down there all day Saturday and, um, what was, there's another one going on, um, drawing a blank, right? Little bit of a brain freeze this morning. Oh, Monday, Monday, we're doing Ready, Set, Go for all the school kids. John Tilson helped, helped us put that together. I think we're doing K through five, like four sessions back to back. We got a couple of great videos, Meredith's tweaking the PowerPoint that I did at the library, uh, we had eighteen at that one and, and we're tweaking that down to age-appropriate content with some fun videos on Ember, you know, cartoon Ember Storm kinda videos and protecting your home, and we've got some Ready, Set, Go bags that are gonna go out that we bought with some of the cert funds, so, uh, so, um, that's good. And then the new OEM website's up, um, it's still a work in progress, but there's a password protected section, I can give you that password later, but then there's the public plans and a lot of firewise stuff, um, so, but on the, on the CES password page, then you'll have access to the AOP and the MOUs and some of the documents and Vernon's gonna help me get some maps together, the GPS-enabled maps, and so, we're making some pretty good progress there.
Did your website is, uh, comes off of the county website?
Yeah, and we still have to disable some of the old links, but it's custercountinggov.com/ OEM. And it's got, uh, pushing that message out, so, um, yeah, um, yeah, I went to the wilderness workshop, Commissioner Fowler was there, um, did that library, and Meredith and Commissioner Fowler went to the large animal evac workshop, so we're trying to divide and conquer. Um, we had our CES meeting, we had our weather spotter training, it wasn't not well-attended, but, uh, Tom Magnusson retired and he had a hardcore fan club, so, I think people were a little sad there. And then we got that big financial reimbursement on the Greenwood, Whatmore Grant down there that we were waiting on, that hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars that came in, so we got that out and paid the contractors, so...
Are they done or they still?
No, they're still working, we had a little over a hundred thousand dollars left, we got permission to keep going, um, we're working upstream, but we do have one landowner downstream that had some issues, um, from last year, so, Teresa Springer's gonna see if she can, um, help them out, I don't know how that'll work. Um, they did get pulled off during the ones, you know, the Tuesday fires, the one seventeen fire and everything, the, um, Juniper Valley Crew is Corrections Firefighting Crew, so they're the, the cheapest mitigation we can get, but they got pulled off and ran, went and run. I got a call yesterday from, uh, the International Association of Fire Chiefs on that Ready, Set, Go grant we put in, so I've got a call of them, they had some more questions, but that's the second callback we got, so, I'm a little bit encouraged that they might throw some bucks and, um, yeah.
Good, well, we continue to be fortunate, huh? I mean, that tender fire down there's gotta be brutal.
Close calls, some really close calls, um, yeah.
And that was Camp Fire started, they determined, I guess, I heard that on the news this morning, tender fire.
Oh, in Phoenix, yeah, I heard.
Mobile Rim looked like it right at the...
One seventeen fire was a muffler dragging on I-25, and forty-seven thousand acres.
So, I was wrong, I swore it down, it would have been a cigarette.
Yeah, I, that's what we were hearing initially and I came back and somebody, and then, then I was up in Colorado Springs over the weekend and I'm like, what is that racket? And I look over and somebody's muffler's dragging, just, I'm looking for sparks going, oh, come on. So, uh, yeah, Dennis Page was out on the one seventeen fire. I think that's the first time Forest Service has really coordinated and responded east I-25 and they were able to, so, um, you know, when, when everything's happening on their federal lands, they're not gonna be able to jump in and help, but, uh, so, yeah, post calls, oh, I got the, um, you know, I think you guys have seen the OneDrive, I think kids have an access, I gotta get back on that update, um, and then I, I have to figure out exactly where my sick time was, but I think I have, you know, six or maybe seven days of sick time for April, so, I'm, I'm back, I was supposed to be back for a full day yesterday and ended up out of the office for more than a full day, but, um, so, I'm back, other than carrying a backpack, I, I don't have any restrictions for it.
You spent twenty hours yesterday on this mission.
I left it.
Sneak for these guys, but I'd have no issue if you want to go take a risk.
My dog had an issue this morning, made me get out of bed. But, yeah, I, I'm, midday nap might be really nice, so, thank you.
Yeah, 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 well, good. Uh, yeah, I was, I enjoyed attending that Ag Disaster Training, that Eden Training up in Slidder, I got a chance, you know, I'm sure you're aware, I rode up with Meredith, had a great opportunity to get to know her a little better and, uh...
She's a spark plug.
Oh, boy, yeah, I think...
Yeah, she got, uh, our situat- situation report finished yesterday, and we got the radio cache done, I mean, we're just, she's great.
Yeah.
And that's why you don't see her, because we're trying to divide and conquer, you know...
I was gonna say, she doesn't get into the limelight much, 'cause she's out there grinding away.
Well, I was, yesterday morning, I was thinking, this is today, yesterday, not today, and I said, oh, you're up for the commissioner, you're giving the report, and, uh, she was gonna come, so, she's over in the office now, so, but she's, yeah, she is, she really is.
Glad to get to spend some time with her and...
I'll send her around if you haven't met her.
So, we're good.
Any questions? Any...
Go ahead.
I, I went through your reports and, um, it appears that things are right on track to where they're supposed to be, is there anything unusual going on you need to know about?
Um, no, I gotta get the CES minutes out, um, we discussed adding, um, after-action reviews to a short section, um, you know, a big event, we'll pull out and do a complete after-action, but we're having some of the same little issues and we figured if we started adding that section, um, you were there, uh, we can cover that, um, I know there was a question about posting the minutes and, uh, I feel like I'm a facilitator for that meeting, that it's sort of a staff meeting and it's sort of, you know, um, a place that we can get agencies to speak, speak freely, so, I would, um, if you, if you want, I would like to throw that to the group, but I guess my instinct is we...
Discretion on that, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to that whole minutes thing myself, obviously, your OEM minutes going on there.
Yeah.
Correct.
Um, well, I could put my reports, I could put my quarterly reports, but the, the CES meeting minutes, um, I, yeah, I, I kinda think I would have to sanitize them at some time to make it more public content, it's more of a staff meeting, you know, for me.
From the OEM side, and I'm speaking strictly on the transparency issue, not that there's been an issue, but that's a platform.
Right.
On the OEM side, CES is the only meeting, right? I mean, there wouldn't be, nine-one-one does their thing, so, do you have a group that has a secretary other than CES?
No, and CES has no, I mean, you know, we can make a recommendation that dispatch do this or the sheriff do this, but we have no authority, um...
We're getting all kinds of visitors, man.
The, uh, I do attend the South Region Homeland Security Advisory Council meetings and the South Region ESF Five meetings, um, those are typically monthly, not every month. Um, the next ones are tomorrow in West Cliff at the Sarburn, uh, nine thirty for Homeland Security and, I believe, one o'clock for Christie Coleman's ESF Five meeting, you're all welcome to attend those, um, that's, uh, you know, instead of having to go down the hill or we, we rotate them around, so, uh, you're more than welcome to come in. Chief, I know they're doing their exercise, I'm expecting Chief Mears from Pueblo ESB and some of those folks up, but, uh, but, yeah, they, you know, Larissa does Homeland Security Minutes and if there are minutes, Christie does them for ESF Five, so...
Seven o'clock and what, and one?
Yeah, I, I haven't seen them, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see, come across.
Uh, Larissa has not sent out an agenda for tomorrow and Christie sent one out Monday night and I didn't get it forwarded, forwarded it. Um, I did get my quarterly report in for the grant and, uh, then finished up the finance piece Monday night, so, um, you know, that quarterly report for transparency, the quarterly grant report shows what we're working on in each emergency services function, so that might be one that, um, I'll email those to you now that they're both done, they haven't been accepted by Christie yet, um, she usually signs off and then forwards them on at the chain, but that's a good one, um...
Yeah, I, I get it that there's not minutes, we don't have a secretary for that CES board, I, I kind of agree with Commissioner France, uh, but I would like you to ask that group and see what they think about that.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair, so that that leadership can weigh in on the decision and it's not me saying, oh, we will do this.
If it's, if it, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think, we feel like it's something we need to say to you, you will do this, that's not, I don't think the intent, but if you could have that conversation with them or I can bring them up the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll throw it on the next meeting agenda, so...
Yeah.
And then, I know E-911 was a question there and, so, if E-911 has a website statute, statutes mandate that they publish minutes and financials and stuff, they don't have a website, so, um, but there are some state statutes that address that, so, uh, this could, yeah, if you create, you know, a page or a link that is them, then...
Well, we got E-911 on there and OEM.
Yeah, and then you'll have, you know, I mean, again, you know, you guys are two votes out of seven there, so, that's probably one we need to throw out on their agenda and decide how to address that, so, 'cause that's actually, you know, statutory authority board, so... But, yeah, I, I've gone, you know, in the past, researching some of that, I've gone to El Paso's E-911 authority site and pulled down documents and seen what they're doing and that level of professionalism and got some real good, you know, sampling to...
Did you give it to Buck?
Uh, in the, I think I sent them links and stuff, but, yeah, I think they...
You're co-chair of that, correct?
Yeah.
So, we do have leadership on that, so, yeah, let's, let's bring that up at the next CES meeting, you see.
But, I'll talk to Buck.
But, here's a concern, I just don't want their, I don't want it to appear that we've got this black hole, we got everybody else reporting on their activities and we get to OEM and we're all, nothing?
Yeah, well, and, you know, yeah, that's minutes, but that's, um, yeah, typically the only, only monthly meeting I chair, and a lot of that is training too, you know, so we did the EOC one-on-one tabletop, I think in May, we're shooting, barring any fires, um, we'll be doing that hazmat tabletop, so, a lot of those are decided to be trainings rather than, uh, meetings that, but, yeah, we can, we can get something, so...
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you, ma'am, for coming in. You shake the, shake...
You shake, shake his hand first.
Oh, is he first?
Oh, yeah.
I get twice, this is, you know, I gotta go, I get duals on this.
See you later, kiddo.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work over the weekend or yesterday, for sure. Gentlemen, any unfinished business? I'm not aware of any, but, okay, thank you, uh, we'll move on to new business, but prior to doing that, we've got some other people, I don't know if there's a format for this or not, but if you would care to introduce yourselves, we've had audience introduction earlier, for those of you who come in after that, you're more than welcome to introduce yourselves.
And go, go kinda slow.
Yeah, we're actually trying to get everybody's name written down.
I'm Coy Plunkett.
Coy Plunkett.
Got it.
Me, I'm Darren Redman.
Got you.
You got me.
Not gonna preach to us, are you, sir?
No, taking off.
Okay. Taking off, I'm all about that, yeah.
I can't see behind.
That's okay.
Yeah, Jack Decker.
Okay.
Leonard Ketchum.
Hello, sir.
Hey.
Mr. Bob.
Bob, yeah, he, I got you.
Oh, he already did, oh, you did that on the side, go ahead, sir.
Merton Young.
M-E-R-T-E-N?
O-N.
O-N, nice to have you.
Don Moore.
Patrick Lynch.
Mike Brennan.
Brennan.
That's everybody. So, I didn't get your last name.
Me?
Yeah.
Courtney Miller.
Miller, that's it, okay. I think I got everybody now.
His wife Lynn.
Yep.
Well, nice to have you folks, thank you. I apologize that we don't have a bigger room.
You gonna update your, um, jury duty list with this?
Well, uh, welcome, folks, nice to have you here. Oh, uh, new business, Mr. Pickrell, you would like to discuss, uh...
Golf.
Golf course, come forward, sir.
Most of, uh, these attendees...
I'm gonna go the other way.
Most of these attendees are your cronies?
Well, I, I, yeah, I guess you could say that, but they're strong, strong supporters.
I was gonna say, the other question is, are most of these attendees golfers?
They are.
Good.
That was evident.
I inherited a set of Ping I irons over the weekend, so...
Well, those are, well, small boys.
Kinda, kinda all about going and stretching them babies out, so...
What color?
What color, yeah. Uh, no, they're not pink, that's the first thing I wiped them.
You gonna pass those out to everybody?
Yeah.
Now, you're gonna speak loud now, Jerry.
I know, which is difficult for me, but...
I know. Given your former life, that surprises me.
Well, speak softly and care.
There you go, there you go.
That's right. Well, welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you. The attendees here today are mostly golfers who have been traveling all over Colorado trying to find a place to play golf and regretting the fact that we no longer have a golf course.
If you're more comfortable, you're welcome to slide that chair back there.
Slide over there, see everybody.
You don't have to, but it makes it easier for you, yeah. Still hanging on them up under the table is, all right.
Uh, we aren't here to hopefully save and preserve the St. Andrews Golf Course. It's been a wonderful asset for Custer County, uh, it was always just assumed we would have one. In fact, there are more golf participants in outdoor sports in this county than there are in tennis, pickleball, baseball, basketball, and we do furnish places for those events to happen. So, there are some eight-hundred-and-forty golf courses in Colorado and many of those are owned by municipality or county. There are none, I think, that compete with the magnificent views we have right here in Custer County. Let's see where we got here, why is it closed, what happened? The golf course was built in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, sometime after that, say, ten, fifteen years ago, Walker Property Group acquired the golf course. It, it has not been a happy relationship out there, I must say. It's not been a major impact for Walker Property Group to take care of this golf course. It has received, and I think these people will support that, it has received minimal, uh, maintenance and care, not because the people who were working there were adverse to doing that, they were, tried their best, but they did not have support of Walker Property Group. Walker Property Group got into financial difficulties and had to file bankruptcy. Group got into financial difficulties and had to file bankruptcy. The golf course was included in that, but it was also covered by a mortgage. Some $305,000 to, we will just use the short-term safe, Pinata. It's a financial group and Pinata was able to persuade the bankruptcy court to foreclose that mortgage. They filed for foreclosure in August of 2016. That's an important date for me because usually when someone forecloses a mortgage, they want to do that and sell it and get their money back or whatever they can do. Interestingly enough, and I was monitoring this, I would go month after month, and they never called for a sale. That usually happens within 30, 60 days of a notice of foreclosure, but Pinata did not. I talked to the lawyers and they said, "But I'm just waiting for them to," what he put, "to pull the trigger." Well, it wasn't until November of 2017, they pulled the trigger. More than a year from the time they filed a foreclosure. In the meantime, what was happening to the golf course? Nothing. It was abandoned. No watering, no mowing, no golf. It stood there like an orphan. Many of us, rude dads, you know, we offered to mow, we offered to do, no. All offers were rejected.
By who? Who controlled it?
Walker Property Group. So about October last year, Walker began to take what assets that were not covered by the mortgage off the golf course, and they could take anything that wasn't a fixture. So if it wasn't nailed down, they took it off. I mean, everything. There's nothing out there of any value pertaining to a golf course. So it now has been listed by Bob Cinderhoff for $525,000 by Pinata. Bob tells me that he's had several offers for the golf course. Only one of those offers intends to keep it as a golf course. We are in danger of losing, and it would break my heart, and I think a lot of these folks hear the same, if that happens. The golfers of Custer County, I think, see the potential of St. Andrews to be a great golf course. It has lost its potential all these 10 years, but we never saw, lost the view of what it could be. And one of the reasons we'd like to do that is for the kids. It hasn't been too many years ago that Doc, who you may know, the.
Doc Markkinen's a chiropractor.
Doc Markkinen is. He had a program going with the high school that was magnificent. He had many children coming out to the golf course for free lessons, free golf, free equipment. That program got into a conflict with Walker and Doc walked away from it and left it. So there's nothing there for kids here to bring them to golf. What we want from you is for the commissioners to grant us the right to submit grants for the acquisition of this golf course in the name of the county. If we are successful in getting the 500-plus thousand dollars to do that, then we want you to lease it out to a nonprofit or profit corporation. So the county will have no liability, no cost for anything. I know the county has no money. They don't. But I am persuaded that another corporation like that could make a difference.
Are they grants you're considering need to be matched by county money?
No, if that's true, we'll have to get that money from somewhere else. And it may be possible that there is within the county some people who would be willing to make private contributions, and that would be wonderful. I think contributions to the county are tax deductible, aren't they? I asked my accountant that. He said, "Well, they are if we give them to the sheriff." So I assume they are if we give them to the commissioners.
I, I think so. I'd have to.
I think so, probably.
Sure.
I think they would be.
Jerry, you had at one point said you had several people that were looking to do just that. Is that falling away?
Well, there has been about a month since I first discussed this with you, and during that period of time, I was in conversation with a fellow, I won't say who it was, but he indicated that he knew someone with big money and that would want to take this burden and buy it, and he might then want to take it as a paying proposition to take that golf course and make something out of it. That would be a wonderful solution for us, so I kind of waited on that and waited on that, and it finally, I think, I still hear rattlings, but I said, "I can't wait anymore. We're going to try to do something that we know will work." So if we're able, and I've listed some grant possibilities here. Great Outdoor Colorado is a good one. They do have golf courses listed as a funding.
I don't see that, sir. First, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Number three.
Uh-huh.
Did you look at each of these, the criteria or anything like?
I haven't done it.
Be data for us.
I haven't done it in detail. Believe me, I do grants for search and rescue, and once you get into those, they, they're very complicated. In-kind contributions, you asked if there were some matching. We could provide in-kind contributions in some cases. I don't know if a grant would come in for half and we had to raise the other half by in-kind or actual contributions. I think there's a possibility that could be done. I've had indications from people who are willing to put monies into this situation. In fact, I've got $75,000 right now pledged, but I'll discuss that with you in a little bit. Now, what if you guys own, what are the problems? The first is title, and I understand that Bob tells me that. Oh, hi, Bob. That there is a title problem at the golf course. There is somehow maybe between the legal definition on the mortgage against the actual survey of the golf course, that there is about an eight-foot gap. I don't know where it is, why it is. Is that explained right, Bob?
I didn't hear everything that you said from Mr. Pickrell, but.
That there is a gap.
Basically, there is an issue as far as the legal description is concerned, and they're in the process of trying to get that rectified.
It's about a gap.
It's about a gap, and it's only about eight foot. But your legal description does not go all the way around and close properly.
Yeah, that would be an issue.
But that's kind of the result.
That would be an issue for anybody, including the county, if they were to buy it. Secondly, the water. The mortgage contained the water rights, so presumably the buyer will obtain the water rights when they buy the property, and it would apply to the county.
How many acre feet, do you know?
No, I don't. The golf course itself has 133 acres. They are adjudicated water rights we share. My home is there on the golf course, and we have the same rights as the golf course does, but they are adjudicated water rights, and we're not affected by them nor them us. But it is something the county should look at. Are there problems with the water commission? I don't, I don't think there is, but you'd sure want to know. And finally, operation. What would you do with it after you got it? I think there are two alternatives for this. One would be a lease to a nonprofit, the other a lease to a for-profit. If you would lease it to a nonprofit, we would still, the county and the citizens would still on it. I formed a nonprofit for that purpose, if it was to be used, the Custer County Golf Association. It's a vacant corporation, nonprofit is sitting there. I would suggest that if the county is successful, that at least one commissioner be on the board of that, so that there's some, some attachment to it. If we got it, I can assure you that startups would be available. The $75,000 that I told you was pledged, and that would be just to get the thing up and going.
Is that enough for all the equipment that they don't have anymore?
I don't know. I hope so. I put out for you here on the third page, the startup budget and expenditure for getting the thing going. It's just basic, and I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but these are my estimates of what it would cost us to replace the golf carts, to buy the mowing equipment. And I must tell you, there has never been a piece of equipment out on the golf course that was worth a flip. It was always broken down or something or did not operate well. I would want, if we were able to get it, to get new equipment. I would, I imagine two zero-turn mowers for the fairways, a tractor and brush hog, a tractor with a.
Loader.
Yeah, loader, and brush hog for the, for the roughs, a couple of weed eaters, and a greens mower. Let's talk about the greens. When the year went by with no care for that golf course, the greens were absolutely a disaster in our now. Probably the best solution, if we could sometime do it, is put in artificial greens such as Salida has, but I don't think we can do that up front. I think we're gonna have to understand that we're gonna have to rebuild those greens from scratch. I think we have some people with knowledge about that, some people who would help with that, but the greens, after all, are the heart of the golf course. And those greens in St. Andrews have been, they've had dandelions in the middle of them. We've had to putt around. Well, anyway, it's gonna be a big problem. In terms of the buildings, we have the golf course clubhouse. We have the pavilion. We have a shop of sorts and a couple of storage buildings. You get varying views about the condition of the golf course, clubhouse. Some say, "Well, it ought to be torn down. It's no good. It's got black mold." I'm not in that camp. Why? Well, it has the only bathrooms available. I don't think the clubhouse is really that much of a disaster. The kitchen has been stripped out. If we wanted to serve meals there, we would have to buy, and I called the young lady who used to work out there.
They weren't in business until a year ago, was that right, or two years?
A year.
Year ago, right.
One year. And she said we would need a kitchen fryer, an indoor grill, a microwave, refrigerator, and freezer to put that kitchen in some working order. And that, I took that about $7,000, assuming we might be able to get some used restaurant equipment. There are people who do that. And we need a little furniture because they took the tables and chairs out of there. But seed, fertilizer, herbicides are gonna be a big deal. I mean, you gotta get that right away and get going on it. The water meter, the water meter was taken out by Walker. I don't know why. They, the water commission doesn't know why.
Didn't want to pay the bill.
Well, they don't have a bill, I mean, but there's a sign on the pumps that no water to be taken out of here on the order of, you know, just because they don't have a meter.
On the order of the owners, that sign is placed there?
No, on the order of the water commission.
Can't use it because they can't meter.
That's it.
Right now.
So we'd have to buy a meter, and I think it's about $150 to get one of those. Then you don't know what winter has done to those, those lines for watering. Watering is such an essential part of a golf course. John Dekker knows that system. He tells me it's, it was a good system, but if it needs repair, it needs repair. That's all there is to that. So I considered that and want to make sure that that part, as is for the greens, to be taken care of. Then there's the operation expense. There's plumbing, I think, is gonna have to be done. Clubhouse is gonna have to be repaired. Advertising, there's a liability insurance policy you'd want to buy right up front. Utilities and supplies, that all comes to $74,350. That money.
Be really clear on what you're kind of saying. You have that money raised.
Have that money arranged. Now, after we do that, can we keep St. Andrews going on its own? I think the unequivocal answer to that is yes. Coy, you were at one time managing the golf course. Perhaps you could address that, Richard.
Kind of build on a little bit of what Jerry said. John Manson built the golf course over 20 years ago, and Peterson, Dave, and Darlene ran it for several years successfully. Walker bought it, and the first year he had it, he brought a pro up from down south, Carolina or Georgia, and it was kind of a disaster. And I kind of came in following him and for two and a half years managed the golf course, and we had, I think, some significant success. Virtually no help from Walker. It was extremely low on his priority list, and he was a very controlled person. No one could write a check on it but him, and he made every decision. And so I think the reality of it was, we accomplished quite a little bit without a lot of support from Denver. The two and a half years I had it, we had somewhere around 60 local members of the golf course. We had a Tuesday men's group, about 18 to 20 men that came out and played golf every Tuesday, and we had a ladies' golf group on Wednesday, about 10 or 12 ladies. We had a businessmen's group, and as Jerry said, Dr. Marcus had the youth group, which was extremely successful. The kitchen more than held its own. We did banquets for weddings and family reunions and anniversaries and catered them. We did quite a little bit in golf tournaments. We had five or six golf tournaments each year, the rotary being one of the big ones, and we had one that for several years, I don't think they've had it in the last few years, of a memorial tournament from a group out of Canyon City. Had over 50 golfers, about over 100 people up there, and they spent money like you couldn't believe. The other aspect of it, interestingly enough, a lot of our golfing came from other communities around us. Our motto was the most relaxing golf in Colorado. We had people come from Colorado Springs, Salida, Pueblo, Canyon City, regulars. And then the other aspect of it was, we'd get a lot of visitors here in the summertime. And I went out to Hornet Creek and all the bed and breakfasts, and I made a little deal for them that all of their visitors got a discount for being there. And that was very successful. You know, just sold, sold, sold on it. We more than met expenses. Now, when Walker charged this rent and charged this allocation. Now, when Walker charged this rent, and charged this allocation fees from Denver, and all that, it evaporated the profit from it.
Hold that thought before you go for it. You don't have it here, but you've got income, you said. What was the operating expense? You said more than covered it.
You know, from memory, and this was over 10 years ago, I don't have those fears in my head. I know that Manuel came out one time with a financial packet, and we went over it, and we were ahead by about $14,000. So that was mid-year. There one time, we had a significant number of members and a loyal following there. Now, it had, after I left, I had some, my wife had some medical issues, and I left in the middle of the year. And I know that it did deteriorate significantly after that. But at one time, we were meeting, now, you, the reality of it is, you could not service debt on a mortgage and take a living out of there and make a profit. But if you didn't have a mortgage, and you weren't trying to take a living out of there, and you were paying for the personnel, the groundkeepers and the clubhouse people, and keeping up your greens, it could meet its own. And I suspect, and this is just, you know, belief without hard figures, that it would not only support itself, but would have a small profit if you didn't have debt or try to take a living out of it. And thank you, guys, for your time. Thank you, I hope, for your support and for the kitchen. Thanks.
This last page that you have before you is, I can't tell you, it's hard fact at all. It's as best as can be done. There's no overbluff on this, except, well, I just have to take what I was told. There were about seven months of operation in 2016, from about April to September, maybe a little bit into October. Four of those months were really good months, and would average $30,000 a month. And the other three were more restrained, but let's say half, about $15,000 a month. That was $165,000 for that year.
Did they keep operating the restaurant?
Yes. In the 165,000 is food, catering, the pavilion rental, alcohol sales, candy, driving range, all of the assets, plus golfer fees. She indicated to me that golfer fees were a significant part of that. But the rest was, because that pavilion has been a very interesting facility for the community. They have weddings out there, all kinds of things that go on. And it's a nice place. It doesn't have any water, no facilities to it at all. There was talk about, "Well, let's make that the clubhouse." I don't know how you do that, no. Any event, the flowers out there were beautiful and around the clubhouse. It was a very pleasant place to be and to go. The golfers' participation, Koi's already gone through that, I won't tell you that this was true in his time, it's true now. We had the Tuesday group, we had the Wednesday business league, we had the Thursday couples. A core group of people, men and women, and they're still here with no place to go. I know Leonard takes a group of about eight people off to Hollydod or Sumo or Four Mile every week. That's a crime and shame, I'll tell you. It really is.
And the other funny thing is, I came up for over 20 years before I moved here, I never knew we had a golf course. Was it just a secret? Was just a few people knew about it? There was no signs coming into town, no sign on the highway in front of it? And there's money that could be put into that just for the golf course. Four Mile, that's in question. They have portable buildings for a clubhouse. And we don't have to waste a whole lot of money on getting that golf course back, 'cause if you get the golf course back, that'll bring the people back, that'll get someone interested in a restaurant, and it should bring everything around. And the pavilion's safe, 'cause there's no water in it, it can't freeze the bus, so, anyway, but we need to, it's important to this community to have that. There is people here that would, that don't know there's one here that would like to have one, and then there's a fellow in the back of the room said he wouldn't even be here if he knew there wasn't gonna be a golf course. But he's already here, so we gotta...
Gentlemen, you've been very kind to hear the presentation. I know you have some questions, so it's your turn.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Thanks, Jerry.
Questions, comments?
So Bob probably has the answer to this. What's the timing? You got, you got people looking to buy?
That's correct.
And how would we tie it up if we could? And is it possible? And where are you at the same?
Okay, what you're gonna have to do is put together a contract and offer. It's gonna have to be submitted up to the present owners, along with earnest money. And then you can put your various contingencies in there that you need. And then it's up to the seller to take a look at all those contingencies, and see if that's something that they wanna go with.
And the seller is the mortgage company or whatever?
Mortgage company that held, that bought the mortgage from the original lender. So these people did not have the original one. They purchased that, and now they are the ones that...
Are they a local outfit in the Springs, or where are they? The mortgage company?
Mortgage company, Denver and Boston.
And can you give us the name of that company, Bob?
Maybe.
You have it, didn't you?
I'm not gonna give it to you right offhand, but I'll get it to you for sure.
I think he had it in here, didn't he?
Yeah, I think so.
I missed it, if you do.
There's two different names, so...
Well, maybe I didn't, I'm sorry.
Maybe you mentioned it.
I mentioned it, but I didn't write it.
I got a problem, and I'm really sorry, 'cause I know you all want me to go. Great idea, let's go. My problem is, the startup and getting it up and running, I know you're gonna raise the money. My real fear will be, over time, if there's a deficit that the golf course has to cover, where will that money come from? So my feeling would be, and I don't speak for my other commissioners, my feeling would be, if you formed your nonprofit, or profit, I don't really care, probably nonprofits who can get you grants, and you ask for the county commissioners to support this organization as a signatory on the grant applications, and we've done this many times before with nonprofits, I would have no issue with this. I'm very concerned about the county owning this property, because while it may be profitable today and tomorrow, down the road, we don't know. The county, as I'm sure you all know, has very significant needs. We have a landfill that's gonna need a very significant amount of money. This building is in very poor condition. We're looking at potentially building a justice center, which is something that we absolutely need. So my mind is going back and forth, going needs versus wants, recreation versus necessity. And I know, and I know you, almost everybody in this room I know, and I'm not gonna blow smoke and tell you this is a great idea, let's go. I have strong concerns about the county being an owner of a recreational facility without some assurances that the county will not be straddled with any down-the-road expenses. So if it was an alternative organization running the operation and needed county support, do we approve of this? Do we think it's a good idea? Will it help our county? I, for one, would sign off on that instantly, and I'm just gonna take a guess that my co-commissioners would also. But my concern is ownership, and I'll just have to be frank with you.
Well, let me address that, Jay, because if the nonprofit takes use from you, you would be, I mentioned liability insurance, you would be held harmless for anything. If it became a complete financial flop, gave up, what a disaster that would be. You own 133 acres, clear. You can sell it.
Without a liability, a potential liability to the county, I would certainly be in favor of discussing this further and figuring out how it could be done.
Well, as much as a contract can give that to the county, that would be in the lease.
You and I know that that's a problem.
But again, that liability insurance would be there for that.
Okay. That's my concern, and I just want to voice it upfront, just tell you where my mind is.
I'll echo the same thing. We do have a problem with the county money. You mentioned a lot of the big issues we got. This is a great idea. I'm 100% behind figuring out how to handle it, coming up with a plan. Right now, you gave us a nice presentation. We gotta put some meat to it, to understand what it really is, and what the contract is, how Bob can hold it, what the stipulations we need in the contract, if he's gonna, you know, what's the right, if there is a down payment, who's coming up with that? Which maybe is part of your operating funds that you'd have to borrow, that you've already got raised, or the startup funds, whatever it is. So I'm all for you coming back with another look at it, if you get, you've got a lot of help here. Get people organized, get them looking at the lease, get them looking at grants or sources, what kind of a, you mentioned nonprofit you've got set up, and how would we structure that? Those kinds of things I think we would need, as well as a better number. We're gonna have to submit grants that are gonna have to show what the operating, they wanna know what the, you know, they don't wanna grant money if it's gonna be immediately going broke. So we gotta convince them we got a business case of some kind. And I know you got some records, and people can stand tall on it. And this is, from my point of view, the center of the recreational universe here in Custer County. I mean, we've got lots of new things here that bring people in. And I don't know why they didn't have signs up, that's a cheap thing. There are things that the county can do later to help. You know, we, we, we'll plow the snow up to the road and open up the driveway, that kinda stuff that we can do out of hide. Helping with the signage, doing some labor, that kinda stuff that we can pull as we see what the budget can support throughout the year. So there's options, but we need to have sort of a plan in front of us. This is a great start. Tell them where to...
Well, one, I wanna thank you. Obviously, Jerry, you've taken the lead on this. There's been a ton of time and energy and probably adequate, or more than adequate amount of expense that you and your cronies have incurred. I understand that.
Cronies in a loving way. Tom talks like that. Let it go.
I'll stick with cronies, because I've played golf with most of them. So I appreciate your work and your effort, and the concern and the desire to keep this asset in this county. Before I share with you some thoughts, I wanna give you a little background for me, so that you understand where I'm coming from. Randy Rusk and I, at the behest of John Manson, took swaffers out there, and we swaffed in the original fairways in that piece of property. So I think I can say I've been involved with that from the beginning. There are years when I wasn't involved for some very specific reasons, and you've alluded to one of them, and that was the condition of that golf course. When it got to the point where I decided I'd rather drive somewhere else and play golf, then I quit playing golf up here. But from the very beginning, I at some point was involved in that. So, and I say that because I want you to understand that there's a huge part of me that loves the game of golf, from old people to five-year-olds, six-year-olds. My grandkids have gone out there and run those golf courses, or golf carts around and whack the ball. So, and I think you all know that. You kinda know where I come from when it comes to playing golf. I've got a water meter, I could, I probably couldn't find it, but Dave and Darlene asked me to bronze weld one of their meters, and I did. And then, right when I got it done, ownership changed, things changed. Craig Walker said, "No, don't need it, we're good." I've been in Craig Walker's home in Denver, I'm friends with him. I do not agree how he ran this particular part of his business. So I, the comments that I'm gonna give you are based on some background that I've had. It's not like I'm sitting up here as a commissioner going, "I don't give a rat's behind about golf." So I'm gonna tell you what I think. I want you to understand where I come from as an individual. I've got some issues with this golf course in Custer County, and I think, I'll articulate them, you already know this, nothing that I'm gonna tell you is a surprise. There are not enough golfers in this county to support that golf course. Can we attract enough golfers? I don't know that. But I do know there are not enough golfers in this county to support that golf course. I visited with the owner and the owner's real estate rep of the golf course in Woodland Park, where I play sometimes, not frequently, but I do play up there. It's a great golf course. There's a guy in California that owns that course. There was a Japanese contingent that owned it prior to him. He is not a golfer, he's an investor, and they are looking at turning, who's played on that golf course in Woodland Park? Anybody played on that? Okay, great course, great setting. They are considering tearing out the back nine and converting the front nine to a par six executive course. And he's doing, he's considering that from guidance of his professional golf advisors, because they truly believe the golf industry in the US is gonna change in the next 20 years. They truly believe people are not gonna X-out four to five hours to play 18 holes of golf. They do think there's a serious market for people to run out and in two, two and a half hours, play some golf and get back to their daily lives. I actually kind of agree with that. I realize, to leave here, Mr. Leonard, and to go play 18 holes of golf, you can kiss one day right in the behind, because it's gone. And that is what I do not like. I love the Four Mile Golf Course, I don't like driving down there to play it. It just tears up a full day. I think there's some holes in your presentation, and it's not your fault. I understand you're not gonna get empirical data from anybody that's on that golf course in the last 20 years, it's probably not available. If it is, then you should've gotten it, and I'll be disappointed that you didn't. But you've stood right here and said, "It's very difficult to get a handle on that." We're talking about a business. We're not talking about an opportunity for us to go do what we enjoy. You're bringing a business proposition to us, that's all it is, from this side of the table, in my opinion, as much as I'd love to hit the white ball. So if you look at this from a business standpoint, obviously, and you brought them up, if we got issues with title, that'll chase off about 95% of any potential investors.
No, it won't.
But until that gets resolved...
That will be resolved.
Yeah. But initially, they'd say, "I don't want anything to do with it until you get this title thing resolved." I get that. I have serious concerns about the water rights on that property. I'm not gonna make a bunch of ignorant statements about water rights, 'cause I'm not as well-versed as I could be and probably should be. I don't believe, and the gentleman's probably more well-versed in water than anybody in the county, is standing back there, so I'll ask you, are those junior rights or senior rights are you aware of to that property?
Both.
Both, okay. And if you take that at face value, say, "Good." If the junior rights outweigh the senior rights, then I would maintain there's probably not enough water to run that golf course. You've alluded to the condition of the infrastructure out there, and that's gonna be difficult to get a handle on. You won't know that till you start pumping water... to get a handle on, you won't know that till you start pumping water through those lines and those sprinklers and find out what's been frozen and broken, and what sprinklers have been robbed for the brass price of scrap iron and so on and so forth. You did speak to the greens, I also spoke to the people at Salida Golf Course, and those are not artificial greens.
One of them is.
Could be. I just said, "Do you have artificial greens up there?" They said, "No," that's all I'm going on. I haven't played there, have you guys played at Salida's to countermand that? But, I drove by it several times in the last month, and certainly from the north road, they appeared to be grass greens. You and I've had this conversation about artificial greens. In my opinion, the last thing this county needs from a financial perspective right now is to own any more land. I believe you're gonna probably see the commissioners approach and consider trying to sell some land, because we have got some financial situations in front of us that we, I think, have decided we are gonna try to deal with. We believe that prior commissioners chose not to deal with some needs of this county, either politically or financially, I've got my opinions about that, but I'll keep those to myself. So, I get it when you say, "At the end, if everything goes south, you're gonna own 133 acres." I understand what you're saying, sir. In my opinion, we do not need to own 133 acres. If we are to authorize and act as signatories for grants, I'm not speaking illegally, I'm speaking about on the surface, from my perspective as a commissioner, just like that, we are now in the golf course business. It's already happened to us once, and I think it would probably happen to us again, because if we say to you today, or in the future, "You know what, we'll support this effort, and we'll be your granting agency, and you get a million dollars grant," what are we gonna do? Tell you we don't want it because we don't want to be in the golf course business? We'd be hung from the yardarm. So, I've got some concerns about just sitting here today and saying, "Yeah, you know what, this is a good idea, we'll, we'll support your grant efforts, and we'll sign off on those, because we're an entity that can do that." That would put us in bed with this project overnight, if you got a grant. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I don't agree.
Okay, but do you understand, Mr. Pickle, where I'm coming from?
In part. It's true, you would have your name on a grant, and the grant would be used to purchase a golf course. But at that point, what we're proposing, the liability to the county ceases. It becomes, if there's grants to be given, given them to the Custer County Golf Association. It may be that a for-profit would like to come in and take that, if he can make money with that. Then you can lease it for a fee, and keep it that way. But I don't understand, I really don't, why you're saying this is a financial impediment.
Well, I would challenge you then to contact any small community comparable to our size in the state. If you guys can sit here and tell me that in a community of our size, that you think a golf course is a moneymaker, I will be quiet, and you tell me that, I'm listening.
We've not told you that it's a moneymaker.
Okay.
We've told you that it will carry its weight.
Based on the data I've seen today, and my experience in the golfing industry, I would take issue with that, sir. I have talked to several people, not just casual people I run into the street, but people that are involved, heavily golfers have been involved in golf courses and golf clubs, and to a T. They have said to me, "Tom, if you are given the golf course, you can't make money with it, it'll drive you into bankruptcy." And I don't like hearing that, trust me, I don't like hearing that. Why is not this golf course up and running today? It's not from poor management, that's not what drove it into the weeds, it's a financial concern. I'm not gonna discount management may have had a part of that, but that is a financial problem out there, that is not a people problem.
But Commissioner Walker did not file bankruptcy because of the golf course?
No, I understand that, I understand that. He didn't want to dump any money into it because it couldn't make any money.
It was struggling along.
Yeah, long before.
In the condition, and it would still be struggling along if Walker had not run into this financial problem of his own. We don't see rose-colored glasses either, we're not suggesting that the golf course will ever be a great moneymaker, but we do think, and I think we have a foundation for this, that it will pay its own way, more than, like Leonard said, he didn't even know there was a golf course. And I think that we can change that.
I'm not posturing, trust me, I'm not doing this to make me look good or bad, I'm trying to be honest with you. I've played golf out there with guys that didn't know, and teed off from out of town, and I teed off with them, and they said, "Where is the number-one hole?" We do have people come up here, did have people come up here from out of town and play golf, I understand that. A thousand-dollar advertising budget will barely get you an ad in either one of these two papers for more than a month. It won't buy you a sign, it will... I'll bet if you had $50,000, your advertising budget would be questioned as, from a business perspective, to advertise this business, to bring people in from all over the state of Colorado, and I'm just shooting my mouth off there, I don't know that, but there's a reason we're not playing golf out there this summer. And I think it's financial. I think it's a poor business opportunity unless you had three or four million dollars to pour into it. And then, how many golfing rounds a month are we gonna sell out there? Now, Woodland Park says it takes 1,000 rounds of golf a month to keep those doors open, totally different scenario, but we're not talking about 60 rounds of golf a month, that won't do it. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. What do you pay at Holy Dock, Leonard? And I, I understand, I'm crowding on this, sir.
I don't know how they, what is it, $28?
Yeah.
Yeah, how do they, how can they stay open for that thing?
Yeah, 40 at Four Mile.
It's hard, man, it's...
75 at the golf course we play at in Woodland Park. Golfing is also becoming a rich man's sport, it is not. In West Cliff, okay, but I'm talking about in the western part of the United States, that is not a common person's sport anymore. You better have some money in your pocket. Go ahead, sir, I apologize for taking too much.
It's fine, you're on a roll.
I'm emotional, I'm emotional about this.
You're on a roll. Why don't you tell us what you think?
I will, given a little more time.
Okay, the only thing I have, and respectfully, I take exception to one thing you said, that it's a business decision, and I think it's more than that, because it's an economic development decision also.
Which is business, and, go ahead, yeah.
Hang on. We don't know the impact of the people who come to play golf from outside our area, who go to our hotels and our restaurants, and go to our shops and spend money, and it helps an economic development. I am not certain we, the county, needs to be an owner in this process. I think a sponsorship of, we endorse the idea for another entity to own it, control it, manage it, and everything else that goes along with it, I don't think I have a real problem with that, as long as I know that the county is not in any way on the hook for when some disaster occurs. I've played out there many times, and I'll tell you, the biggest fear for me is getting bit by a rattlesnake, that's really the truth, okay? So, but the bottom line is, if we have financially minimal or zero liability, and I look at it as not just we're helping someone else run their business, I'm looking at it as an economic development opportunity, I think I could probably support this if I had the assurances that the county was not financially on the hook. I agree with you, I do not want to own another 133 acres. Just in my mind, over $500,000 for 133 acres on the valley floor seems like a lot, but I'll leave that to the experts to tell me whether that's a reasonable number or not, I don't know. Regardless, I could support this if we don't have the liability from the economics, from the economic development point of view.
Yeah, I, the other, and I'll, I'll say this, and then I'll give Commissioner Ken to an opportunity to speak before I speak again. I've laid out what I think the problems are. I've also got some ideas and suggestions, I'm not just gonna throw water on it and turn around and walk out of here, so I'd like to also have an opportunity to throw out some ideas before this meeting's over today, but...
Okay, yeah, yeah, let me say a couple things, because I agree, Tom's got some good points, so does Jay, and I made a few already. We do, I want to correct Tom on one thing, we have obligations, we have investments this county has to make for our future. One's the landfill, he mentioned that, Justice Center, other things, and we are working this broadband deal, which I have told everybody, and everybody knows how we stand as a board, it will not cost this county one dime, and if then it does, we're gonna stop, because we, we got the same presentation, basically, we'll get renters, we'll have a lease, it'll cover the cost of maintaining the roads that we have to do, that kind of stuff. So, so we have that worry, and guess what, you know, we've been nickelled and dimed a little bit on that already, with some economic money that we already had, which upset me. So, so that's why I'm all for the idea of doing this, I'm not for making a vote today to go do it, don't expect that. I would want you guys to come back with a presentation, and what we would want to present for us to agree to, like an ironclad lease, an ironclad whatever, the cost is gonna be, and I'm willing to gamble on it, as long as the landowner at that time can sell it, and Bob will know better, this is prime ground down there, there's no question about it, it's great for hayland, if nothing else, it's prime. I worked on that ranch as a kid, my dad also golfed there when they made it a golf course, he was a great golfer. He died not long after it was built, but, but not because of the golf exercise. So, I think we can come back, I want to hear your input, too, I mean, we have public comment on anything that's presented, and then you guys will all get a chance to echo it, and come back with how we're gonna handle like the down payment, how would we get the lease covered? I like the operational expenses being covered, but then you gotta make sure that the business case says it supports what Tom brought up, how do you maintain those greens for seven months out of the year? Let the restaurant own itself, and find if it closes its door during the winter, that's up to them. But, you know, we need, it is a business decision to some extent, and I also agree, it's a good income maker for other reasons, to attract people up here to this valley. And I heard a couple people say, "The only reason I wish we'd have known," and a couple people said, "I came up here because you had a golf course." So, that's where I stand right now, I don't want to be put on the spot to say yes or no, I'm on the spot to say, "Yes, give me the rest of what we need to present, what case we can get ahold of," ignoring the issues that we have right now.
I'll echo what you said, I agree with what you said. I played golf with my friends back there in the corner from Arizona, when they lived in Arizona, great little golf course, had a great time. In this realm, probably two of the wisest people I know back there, because, or luckiest, because they sold their property down there, and I don't know, maybe within, what, two months, that the golf course closed?
Yeah, it closed.
Shortly after, let's say that.
Shortly after we sold our house.
Sad, it kills me to drive by a golf course that's been closed, the one in Canyon City that still pulls my heartstrings, man, because we love to play down there. And as you may know, a group of investors bought that golf course. They had invested over a million dollars in the building and the swimming pool, and those investors, I believe, bought it for a million dollars, and kept it open for two years, and it crashed. And now the deer and elk are down there wintering, and it is sad. I just cannot help but think those are results of being a poor business plan, business action, I don't know. My wife and I have had this conversation, and I suggested to her, when the course was still open, "You know what we need to do, we need to get nine families, and have each family sponsor a golf hole." Not the fertilizing, but certainly the mowing, the weed eating, the upkeep on a hole, have a contest at the end of the year, what was your most favorite hole to play in the golf course? Bring your own lawnmower, zero-turn mower. I told my wife, I said, "I've got a tractor, a brush hog, backhoe, and zero-turn mower." I would take those to the golf course and maintain a hole. And of course, then the backhoe and the tractor, the backhoe could be used by the golf course, I agree. Equipment's a huge thing for that golf course out there, and you're right, man, they had some of the most ratty equipment that had to be on the planet. The other thing, I do want to throw water back onto it, I've asked around the average cost to build and maintain a green, $20,000 a piece. And if you played out there, you know that was downfall of that golf course, was the quality of those greens. I've played on pastures, I've, I'll bet I've played on every sand-green golf course in eastern Colorado, west of the Rockies. And people will hit off of cow pastures, but they, with the exception of the sand-green genre, they want to have a nice green to play on. And I don't see that happening. It could, it has to be able to happen, because it happens in mountain communities, a heck of a lot higher in elevation than we are. So, it can happen, but I come back to, the only way that can happen, you're gonna throw money at it till you're blue in the face. Yes, ma'am?
Are you ready for comments?
Certainly, I, yeah, I think this is open for...
Sure, I have no problem.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I wasn't here for this, I didn't know it was gonna happen, but you have an unexpected supporter here. I think one of the main things, and I've heard it through all the years I've been here, many, many, that people came here because it was a St. Andrews golf course, that was the draw, and people bought cabins here, so they could do their golf course circuit around Colorado. I think you have a chance, I agree with you, that it needs a little bit more detail on the business plan, I agree with Jay, that it can be done the way with no liability, so I don't want you to be discouraged, because I think it's a good thing. And look at your demographic projections, retirement, if they have a golf course to come to, there's a draw. There's ways to advertise and get into places without spending a ton of money, you have to be careful where you put it, but some of them will do it, like featuring an article in the links or something like that. So, I really do want to encourage you, I think you have a great idea, I think it's feasible, it could tie even into some of the tourism dollars, it brings in tourism, it brings in people wanting to move here, there's a lot of marketing ideas that you could do with it. I lived in a neighborhood that had a nine-hole golf course, three-part, thirty years. People were on waiting lists to buy in that neighborhood, it was sustainable, they had a low, very low, $300 a year fee for a single person, 500 for a family, they were able to make it, and so if you want to name that place, I'd be happy to give it to you, but I don't agree that, yeah, time for future generations may go away, but they're living in smaller places, and they get out more, so I think there's a caveat to that also. So, I would encourage you to pursue this.
Yeah, I want to encourage you, and I will help you personally, not as a commissioner, but I'll be in the, I'll be sitting in the crony, I don't have a problem with that, I hope you understand that, that I want to be playing golf in Custer County. I believe that... I believe that if you had a group today, sitting here and said, "We're the group, will you support us?" Because we can go after grant money, can we get a letter of support? I guarantee you, my name is on it. Ownership? Probably not.
Tom?
Yes?
You know, there's another option, without the county actually owning this, it could be a fiscal sponsorship agreement with a nonprofit entity.
Yeah, with a, another organization, correct? Yeah.
I mean, the county could be the fiscal sponsor with an agreement, I just drew one up for Trails For All, we need a fiscal sponsor for the time being until we incorporate. And it would, I think it would serve the same purpose, I think with the county as the fiscal sponsor, you may be allowed to get grants, I may be wrong on that, but if you could get these same grants with the county as the fiscal sponsor, but the county doesn't end up owning it, that it would be your nonprofit that would be the ownership. That would be...
And that's what I'm saying, I would support that, no problem. Mr. Schock?
I think we did this at the, one of the towns I lived in, we owned the golf course already, the members did, and we gave it to the city, and the reason we did that is grants were available that you cannot get as a private entity, as even a nonprofit, that a Parks and Recreation type of grants could get. I think that's one of the reasons Jerry's talking of this, is doing that. I think there's two things that concern me. One, if you go out to the golf course now and look across the street, what's already growing across the street, if you haven't been out there, you need to see that, because they're going to buy up land and water as quick as they can and do more of that.
For the ham stuff you're talking about.
And if we don't do something with this golf course, we're going to end up like the, I hear news all the time with conquistador. We're going to sit here and we're going to look up there at that hill and say, "There's a dead ski run, there's a dead golf course, there's something else." And it is, to me, more than just, it is an economic development thing, there are people, I played golf all my life, my daughter went to college to play golf, my wife plays golf, we have not played here at all, because number one, the course was in bad shape, and number two, the course quit, it died. And so, I have not played, I played out there two times, and those were in tournaments. But I think it is a, it's something economic development type of thing, and I know it is a business decision, we have to look at that, too, but it's an economic development thing for our community. There are people that will come to play golf. If this internet thing comes in, you're going to be bringing young families here that work from home, they're going to be looking for golf, they're going to be looking to go to the lake. We've already shut the lake down now that you have to have permits and you have to have this and that, you can't have boats on there anymore that do jet skis and all that, so that cut some economic development down for us, and I know that's whoever decision that was. But, I'm just saying, we've got to look at, how can we provide things that will allow people to say, "Hey, recreation." I know there's a group right now trying to work on the trails, to say, "We need bike trails, we need ATV trails, we need things," because there's people that drive through, and I watch them come, and they fill up their ATVs at Shell Station every single day and drive on out, going somewhere else. And those people could be here dropping money into our community.
Yeah, I'm not, I certainly wouldn't try to attempt the economic development argument. I would guess the average carload of people that would come here to play golf are probably not going to spend the night. I think they will come to this valley, play golf, and go home. I grew up in a Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development family, so I don't want to make ignorant statements, but for us to sit here and pat each other on the back and feel good about, boy, this is going to be a great economic, as far as people coming in, staying in restaurants, staying overnight, I think they're going to come here and play golf and go home. That's what I think. You all may think differently, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but I want you to know how I feel about it and what I think about it. Are there going to be times when they'll, "Hey, we're here, let's go down Main Street?" Certainly there are, but I go play golf in Wyndham Park, I go up there to play golf and I come home. I go to Four Mile, I play golf and come home. I used to love to go to La Vida, we played golf and we got home. We might have stopped and bought a six-pack of beer, but that was it. I'm just going off my personal experience there. I don't know what drove that golf course down there in La Vida into the ground, but that was another very, very sad situation, that was a fun course to play down there.
I had to make a comment. What kind of golfer are you that doesn't only one six-pack of beer? That's just not my experience.
In those days, because I don't...
Oh, you were, well, the Boy Scout...
I don't drink now, I meant one six-pack per person, so that's a case to get home from.
Yeah, that just never happens.
I would encourage you to try, Mr. Pickrell, and again, personally, I would, I would sign up to help you, is to find an organization besides the county to move forward. I do need to say this, and I got yelled about it yesterday, and was called all kinds of names because I'm a money-spending idiot, sitting now as a county commissioner, all I want to do is spend money. That landfill is going to be a serious concern, and there's no recreation about that. We're talking about a recreational business with the golf course. That is county business that is going to have to be addressed. We've got five and a half years of lifespan left on our existing facility out there. We have enough land, we're in the process, we met yesterday, of trying to get the rest of that property permitted, so that, based on the information and the people we've talked to from the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, would gain us between 60 and 75 more years of having a landfill in this county. That need has to be addressed. When you leave, walk around this courthouse and just look at the exterior of the courthouse to get an idea of where we're at and what kind of a facility we're in. Look where we're meeting. The ventilation's terrible, the lighting's good, the birds sound nice, we don't have any fire, we don't have ADA. We have got to do something as a county for our county facilities. We're in great shape in this courthouse compared to the sheriff's office. That place has fallen down around their ears. I didn't realize that until I got involved as a commissioner. I'll say it, then I don't have to walk out of here and go, "I wished I'd have been honest with these people." We've got more pressing financial matters than the golf course for this county. Doesn't mean we couldn't find a way to do them all, but when you start talking about fiscal responsibility, man, we were up against it in a couple of areas.
But you did say, if we're not financially liable, you would be more inclined to...
Yes.
I'm not saying you will support it, but you'd be more inclined to support it if the obligation to the county is zero or close to it?
I would. And let me tell you about my hesitancy there.
We took a break.
Yeah. Let me finish this statement, and then, Commissioner Ken and I sat in the very first meeting when we got sworn in, and we were confronted with a request, "Will you support us to write a grant? We need somebody to sign these grants." And we said, "Yeah, we'll do that." Commissioner Ken said, "As long as it does not cost the county anything." I'm talking about the broadband, it's not a secret. And Economic Development Corporation said, "Absolutely, it's not going to cost you anything, we're going after a grant." Yesterday, we voted to spend $9,500. And we didn't want to vote that way, but we felt like we had to, to try to get ourselves in a position to get another million-dollar grant, which I think we're going to get. But you see where my hesitancy comes from, to sit here today and say, "Yeah, we'll do your granting thing." The next thing you know, man, there is a good chance we're going to own a golf course, and we're going to be paying to keep this thing up and running. And then, where are we?
But what we do need to do, Tom, and we've mentioned it, come back to, if you've heard the arguments, we don't need to beat a dead horse. You guys, I want to hear more about it, and I think it's a, Jerry, I admire you. Jerry's, I don't know what you guys know about what he's been doing, but he's been hitting us off and on, me, and we've been sitting down, working this, and we all think it's a neat idea, it's a good thing to have for the county, but we've got to figure out what that good is, you know, how we support it. And there are different options, and the neat thing is, one, a bunch of us makes a better decision than one guy or two with, "Here's what it's going to be." You all have great ideas. I heard even our good lawyer over here coming up with another angle. You've just got to get the juices flowing, so please do that, don't be discouraged. It might, my personal view, so, and I really appreciate what you've done, Jerry.
The only thing I would ask you to imagine is not the disastrous conclusion of the golf course, but if it continues as I know it would do, 10 years from now, you'll have a golf course.
I desperately hope, I hope in two years we have.
Unless we take that chance now, we will not.
And I guess my final comment would be, as a commissioner, I'm not in the chance taking the business on this golf course. I will help you all I can, but I just cannot vote to put this county in jeopardy of owning a golf course. I'll help you any other way I can, and I'll take my shots from you, personally or whatever, I don't care. I'm fine with that, but I'm trying to be honest and tell you where I'm coming from, that's all I know what to do.
And I'm very impressed, you guys rallied, it was a pretty big rally, surprised me, I didn't, who knew? But there's got to be others out there, too. I'm sure you all have other friends and ways and other thoughts on how to raise money to get this started and figure out how to get the grant, and help us help you get the grant.
If there was a non-for, or, sorry, if there was a for-profit organization, could they sell shares?
Sure.
Even though we saw what happened down there in Custer, or in Fremont County, but there had to be something else going on with that golf course, that those shareholders ended up taking a hit for 100 grand a piece, there were 10 of those guys that put up 100,000 a piece. I'm certainly willing to continue this conversation, I've been asked if we can take a quick bathroom break, we've been sitting here since nine, so if you guys want to continue and have...
I think we ought to end it with, so that they know we're not coming, they don't need to come back. We're not going to vote on anything, we want you to come back with a plan, okay? That we can, if there is something that we need to...
I don't know that we want them to do that, but...
I think we may, if you direct on where our mind is coming from, to help you come up with, you're right, something you'd grant to us based upon how we feel about this idea.
Well, I'm going to look at Ken's suggestion.
Fiscal sponsorship?
If sponsorship allows us to get grants, that's all we need, really.
Yeah.
I am not at least in a little bit discouraged, nor am I worried about whether the golf course is going to be a success, because I've talked to all these people and 100 more who desperately feel the need to have that golf course, and I'm persuaded it's something we must do.
I understand that.
The time limit here is urgent. Bob has a duty to his clients to make the best deal he can and get that golf course sold. It won't be a golf course unless the one buyer, the one buyer is successful.
Understand that, and I hope you guys understand that we can't function from that perspective alone, that, "Hey, you guys, we're in a time crunch, we need you to do something now." I mean, we'll put this county bankrupt so stinking quick, we'll be joining Archuleta County. So, I...
But, let me ask, when is the next election meeting?
That would be April, or May the 18th.
16th.
16th, sorry.
16th and Wetmore.
Yeah, down in Wetmore. I'm certainly not opposed to continue having this conversation either today or at a subsequent meeting, don't misrepresent, or don't misunderstand me as a commissioner, so...
But we do have another pressing issue right at this moment.
I understand. A couple issues.
Could I be any more blunt?
You could ask, you could ask him. So, let's stand in recess for about three or four minutes. Back to order, please, let the record show, it's 11:34, May 2nd. We are at the point in our agenda of public comment, if there are any. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I apologize that I was out of town for your last couple meetings, but I wanted to clarify, just for the record, government agencies are not allowed to participate in publicly participating in politics and elections, correct? Not correct?
That would be an attorney question, I can't answer that.
What are you talking about, participating?
Well, it's because of the presentation by Bob Tobin, and I feel like it was in violation because there are other parties in the hospital district election, and he was coming and distributing their materials that were passed out in a coffee form, so to me, that's electioneering. And asking for the commissioner's approval, I believe there was a small statement made that the incumbents were approved by Jay, and I just don't feel that that's in the spirit of the election and non-government agencies.
I'm sorry, what statement did you attribute to Commissioner Prince?
That he had said that he supported the incumbents to the hospital district.
I don't recall that.
I could say that.
You were gone then.
So, I, since I wasn't here and I couldn't ask for that to be stricken, I would like at least a note put that that was, strike Jay's comments, or how, whatever is appropriate, I don't know the right avenue, could not find it in Robert's rules. I don't know why that was allowed to go on as a presentation and a conversation when it was political.
I did allow it as a chairman, I allowed Tobin's presentation to be, well, we allowed the presentation to be on the agenda, I allowed him to continue to speak throughout his presentation.
So, who put it on the agenda then, Tom?
I think he called and asked to be put on, didn't he, Ms. Gady?
Okay, so, maybe we should have, but I'll tell you this, I know from our point, from my point of view, this board cannot endorse any political candidate. I remember Kelly, you came up in a meeting during the recall and made sure that people weren't wearing paraphernalia that represented the position. The Board of Commissioners can't endorse either the incumbents or the ones that are coming. Now, private citizen can, all you want. And I know from a government point of view, and I've been in the government many years, they would never allow, you could not make a speech in a military or a civilian agency on endorsing anybody for office, ever. You could go and vote however you do, but it's because you can't have the government having the appearance of endorsing a certain agenda going down some path, so that's true.
Well, I'll comment on what I said. I did say what you said I said. They were talking about their accomplishments, and I said, "I think you did a very good job, and I endorsed you for doing that."
I would say, number one, that Commissioner Prince used the word "I," you did not use the word "we," so I want that to be understood, that he was not speaking on behalf of the entire board. I don't know if it's legal or ethical or anything else for an individual commissioner in a public BOCC meeting to endorse or not endorse or whatever, I don't know that.
I endorsed the work that they have done. I didn't endorse them as the incumbent party in an election, and that's what it was taken, that's what it was taken, but it certainly was not the intent.
And if the papers then would make sure that it's corrected, that it wasn't an endorsement from a commissioner, I don't know if they're going to say that or not, but just for clarification.
Yeah, you bring up an interesting point, because we are live-streamed, expunging something or, well, not rescinding, if not rescinding, it would be expunging something from the record, can only be done from a digital and audio and a written record, it couldn't be expunged from a live-stream audio, is my point.
You have the same problem with retracting a statement in the paper, you print a retraction.
Yeah, I, it was unusual, because the hospital district has never... Yeah, I, it was unusual, because the hospital district has never, never reported to the Board of Commissioners.
And we have no jurisdiction.
Yeah, during the four years I've been here, and they've actually invited, you know, Delwyn Lester in the fast, and he did show up.
As did I, as a chairman.
And, but I realized after Bob Tobin was talking, it was sort of like a campaign swash a little bit, and I, I didn't want to be rude to him.
He kept saying, in spite of what you've heard.
Yes, so I, you know, so he said his piece, and I didn't catch what Jay said, I was, and, and it, but you all just listened to what he had to say, without comment other than that comment, and, but I think it was probably inappropriate for him to use this forum.
What do you think, Tom? Is it appropriate for us to make sure that the world understands we don't support either the incumbents or the candidates, one way or the other, as a board?
Well, I think we'd have to go back to the legality, where we're at with the legalese on what we can and can't do in that regard. I'm not capable to speak to that directly. Personally, as that presentation progressed, I felt clearly it was a political ploy. I don't think it was a political ploy to influence our three votes, I think it was an opportunity to get into the public eye as much as they could, or he could, I can't say they, I apologize for that. I don't know that even hindsight, that we, that I could gavel him out of order, I don't believe that that's the case. We could ask him not to, but I don't know of any legal statutes that anybody couldn't come in here and attempt to run a political ploy by us. I don't know, I keep looking at you from a legal standpoint.
Well, I mean, if they came in and started handing out campaign literature and everything else, we could certainly put a stop to that, this was done in a little different...
Right, on the agenda.
But all you can do is what you've just said here, is, Kelly, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Can I just...
I heard different than that. I heard a lot of, here's our accomplishment. Now, I grant you, it was definitely political, but I heard, here are accomplishments, here's how many people we've served, here's what we've done, and I thought it was more of a report. And now, I mean, I agree that it hasn't been done since I've been around, and I've gone in many meetings before I was a commissioner. And when, Delwood or Delwyn, I'm sorry?
Delwyn.
When Delwyn was there, I know he never came, but I honestly thought it was more of a status report than a political thing. Now, when they gave out the flyers and stuff, I agree, it went over the edge, but I was interested to hear where the staffing their doctors from, and...
Well, that is interesting, but the timing of it, just prior to the election coming out.
It had some appearances, let's put it that way. No, I can't, I don't disagree. Go ahead, Kelly.
I was just going to say, from an electioneering standpoint, the reason I didn't say anything is because I'm not running that election, it's not taking place in this building, except for on Tuesday. We don't have any ballots going in or coming out, and so, as far as an electioneering standpoint, only on Tuesday can we enforce that, so that's why we couldn't.
So, but the commissioners couldn't enforce that?
Enforce what?
That's up to...
Enforce what?
Enforce not having a political presentation, or all the government agencies.
Yes. I don't know that.
I think we can, and I, just from my experience, you can take it for what it's worth. If you don't like it, I'll, I think we can go forward and get with the CCI guys and get a ruling. But we are government representatives elected by the people. We cannot stand up and endorse anybody.
Oh, you're speaking differently than what she just said, and I do mean to interrupt. You said endorse, and she said, can we prevent that from happening in here? Those are two different things.
Well, I think we can stop it if they are, yeah.
I agree with you, but I don't believe it's appropriate to sit here and endorse, but I said, I don't know about allowing that to happen, especially coming through an agenda. None of us knew that.
But in a way, in Robert's rules, if I had been here, you could go to the order of the agenda, and you could have stopped the agenda item.
Certainly you could, but on what grounds? You could call for the orders of the day, no problem.
That it was political and presented to a government rule.
We could table it.
It was, it was my opinion that it was political, but I also agree with Commissioner Prince, there was information in there being provided to this board about a taxing entity of this county.
But they don't, they don't report to you, the timing was bad, and their handout was political.
Um, I can pull it out, I, I thought it, well, I didn't look at that as a political handout. Now, he was reading from a political handout, no question.
He kept holding up his flyer for the election.
I don't believe it would be accurate to call that a political handout. I'm not disagreeing with where you're coming from.
But Tom, he did, he did always flash his folder that he was using, and saying, I'm...
I'm not, I agree with you, but I believe Ann was saying, this was a political handout.
It was part of it.
And I don't believe this is.
It was given out at their coffee.
Well, doesn't matter, doesn't matter where he's used it, I'm just trying to deal with the facts.
It's un-audited facts. That is an un-audited report that was changed from the core of financial information we got from the hospital.
Well, and this was an un-audited report that we received this morning, but we still considered it, we looked at it, we discussed it. I, I don't want to argue the point, I agree with you that I think we were set up, not arguing that. But when you're starting to ask, can the chairman gavel somebody down, you better have exactly the right and correct reason to do that. I felt used and a little duped, personally, but that does not give me the right as a chairman to gavel him down and put him into it, or take him off of the agenda. He was put on the agenda to give a presentation about the medical clinic. In my opinion, as a chair, that's a legitimate agenda request, and so we allowed that. Did it go a different direction? I believe it did.
I think even some of the statements...
Well, and he was a candidate, he is a candidate.
True, but he did not sit down and introduce himself as a candidate running for the medical board. I just want to read you a little bit, I studied on...
A candidate also, I mean, you know, just because you're a candidate doesn't preclude you from talking.
No. I just want to read this little excerpt. On extremely rare occasions, when it is desired not only to rescind an action, but also to express the strongest disapproval, a member may move to rescind and expunge from the record minutes, quote, parentheses, or the record. So it's not something that's just done likely. That says to me, you know, you better have, I don't mean you, I'm saying commissioner, better have very, very solid grounds to expunge something from the record. We'll never expunge the live-streaming video.
All he can do is retract it in another meeting.
He could, but you can't force somebody to retract a statement, you can request that, but, so, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure the lines are clear between what we feel and what is absolutely correct to do or not to do. Do you understand what I'm saying there?
I think we're going in circles, because it's, was, wound up being a political statement, presented by political people, and to a government agency, and that's not allowed in any government agency, so I don't see why it would be allowed here.
Okay, it was not allowed here.
Well, you listen.
Yes, what was allowed was for the, a board member from the medical clinic, get on the agenda, come before the board, and give a report. That was allowed. He never asked me to vote for him. He never handed me a button or any other political...
But, but what he did, there were some improper, in my belief, some improper statements he made about, in spite of what you've heard, he waved his flyer around that he's campaigning with, and so that is an issue, that we could have probably told him not to be saying those things, or whatever.
Why didn't you say something at the time?
Why didn't? Just for the same reason you did. Why didn't, and why did you say what you did? But, see, so that's, so what do we do after the fact now, is the real issue here?
Was it that you'd like us to do?
So, do we...
Just what I said, I would like it to, and I have stated it, so it's in the record, and I would like the papers to know my position, so that they're aware of how they report it. And that accomplishes that, and I hope in the future...
Nobody here tells any paper how to report anything?
No, I'm just asking.
However you choose to report it, that's how you do.
I'm just asking.
The only thing we could do, Jay, is, as a board, just to say, just to make a statement that, you know, we do not, you know, anybody come and talk to us about the data, whether they're running for office or not. I do not campaign for my job, I never make a statement about that at all. And so, we want to just make sure it be clear, we could make a, a generic statement that says, this board doesn't endorse any candidate, one way or the other.
I haven't issued that at all.
I don't either, I don't even think that's necessary for me.
That would be a public saying that the paper would report, as well as maybe make the statement to make sure, but we did listen to some facts, that's a fact. We did.
Yeah, I, I don't think, as a chairman, I was incorrect in allowing him to continue. Had he gone a different direction, I would have probably said, you know, let's consult with our attorney if he's here, if not, I would make that decision. But I did not feel that, I certainly wasn't in tune to, oh, is he going to go political with this, so certainly was not...
And we learn as we go along. I think the next time somebody came in here and did the same thing, I think we would caution them to begin with.
I think that would be the fair word to use.
Sure, well, we would make, and if they kept stomping, we would say, sorry, sir, you're out of order.
Yeah, but then, you know, it's, where do you draw that line? If Commissioner Candace sat here in a board meeting and said, I know you guys know that I'm campaigning, or that I'm running for election, he just did exactly what you're talking about.
And I would think he would be inappropriate in the commissioner board meeting.
I would agree. I'm not saying he wouldn't do that, but it could happen just that quick.
Make sure you know that.
Yeah, it could happen that quick.
And it never has, to my knowledge, so...
Can I ask a question to Kelly?
Uh, yeah.
If you were running this election, would that have been stopped, do you believe? I mean, it's just...
Now, when you're shaking your head, I'm thinking you're meaning yes.
Maybe just, just give us your facts, your, whatever was on that report, give us your facts and not...
Yeah, why are you here?
Not throw in, just give us the facts.
And I won't quote you on that in any way.
But was he electioneering, in your opinion? Was he, I know we're not into that, but if we were, hypothetically...
It's not fair to put her on this...
Well, that's what she does for a living, it's what we pay her to do. Would you have considered that electioneering and asked the chair to stop it?
I, I probably would have said, some of your comments are not, not appropriate.
Because she certainly...
I think we've all said that, I mean, all three of us said that we feel that.
So Ann, give us something to act on. What would you like to see?
Well, and to follow up on Kelly's comment, she asked me to take my commissioner, county commissioner button off during the electioneering thing, so I'm not trying to be obstinate, but I do think it's a fair question, I mean, it was hypothetical.
I don't have any issue with this question.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so go ahead, Bill, you had a comment.
I was just making the same statement. I think that, I think Ann has a point.
Oh, I do, too.
Yeah, I don't have a problem saying this board doesn't endorse either candidates or incumbents, just as a statement. We received a nice presentation from the clinic, it was dat, data facts, and it was not taken to be a, you know, a endorsement of any of the people running for election.
You know, I looked at that document yesterday, and, I mean, it's probably pretty obvious, and the questions I asked, I thought it was low-hanging fruit that he brought to us. It wasn't whether we could prove it was accurate or not, that wasn't the point. He offered to come give us a report. What he chooses to report and what he doesn't choose to report, that's up to anybody, you can't know that, but the only way, and he certainly gave us the opportunity to ask questions, which we did, I tried to view that as a informative report from the medical clinic.
And I'll add, I did compliment their board for the accomplishments that he talked about, and I compliment a lot of people often, because it's just my nature, and they do have new physicians, they have new staff, they've gone through an upheaval, they're trying to bring order to it. I complimented them for that, if that's, you know, that's just the way I am.
It certainly wasn't out of character, I've heard you compliment a lot of people coming before the board. The crime here would be...
It's my nature, I'm sorry.
If you would not have been afforded the opportunity to have this discussion with the commissioners, that would have been the real crime. If we'd have just said, no, we're not talking to you about that, then, whew, you know, so...
I wouldn't even ask.
Pardon?
I wouldn't even ask to come present before you, because that's not appropriate.
Well, now we would, that would be totally...
Well, and, and I get that. I personally, and as the chairman of the commission, do not believe, I do not believe that he came here as a candidate to speak to us about him running for a board position or not.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's my opinion, that's not...
I go with Clint's statement. The timing was suspect.
Timing was suspect, and the way he presented it, my, that's my opinion.
And some of the facts, I believe, were in question, but...
That's...
But what you were asking for is accomplished now.
Yeah.
You're all on the record, newspapers here, it's been livestreamed, just like the...
Right, and that's why I say the crime would be if she didn't have that opportunity to go on.
I think that's all you wanted.
We've all got our opinions on record, so we're good.
Yeah, well, thank you, ma'am. Other public comment?
Jerry, you got more?
Well, it is, before we adjourn, signing that, I want to thank you for allowing this topic to be brought before you. I understand your positions very well, don't necessarily agree with it, but understand them. I am encouraged by what Clint has told us about sponsorship. If that works out, the only thing you're going to see from me next is a sponsorship letter, and I'm going to start getting grants, or... I really believe, personally, there's someone in this community who's willing to put up that much. I'd find you...
The question I would have for you, moving forward, I personally believe, as a commissioner, you would do us a favor if you allowed us to do due diligence and not bring a grant request to us and expect to sign it that day.
Well, of course.
I think we need time to process and research.
Well, yeah, I think you need to present the big picture to us, and let's figure out what that means and all that.
I would think the grant itself would be, would be most, would cover most of that. But I think the sponsorship issue, you can resolve, because it's, it appeared to me you were all in agreement with that idea.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You bet. Other public comment, before we adjourn. Hearing none, I declare...
I, I actually want to say something about the document, though, because...
The document, meaning?
Well, the document that Tobin handed out. That is part of the financial record over at the clinic. They're not going to put fraudulent information out there, number one. That is all what was reported at the board meeting that I covered, so they're not going to fraudulently report information. I just want to make sure and get that out there as well.
Thank you. Hearing no further public comment, I declare the meeting adjourned, let the record show 11:58.
We don't have anything after this?